Good evening, good evening, everyone. City of Lamarck City Council's regular agenda, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Beginning at six P M, the council chambers at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. According to section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer in the quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present. At eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public. The meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. Council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. Number one, a meeting has been called to order. Number two, care, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Uh, I don't believe Councilmember District C is with us online. Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. Let the record reflect that Councilmember District C has an excused absence. Item three, invocation and pledge. Welcome. Thank you all for coming. We're moving now into a time of invocation. We're going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Joe Campion to lead us. In our invocation as well as Councilmember James Ross to lead us in our pledge. Uh, if you are able to, please stand and silence your phones. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem. Glorious and blessed God. Today we place, as always, we place our work and ourselves into your hands. Uh, we ask that, uh, as we discuss ideas, as we generate energy in this room. That even the smallest task that we do, uh, may it bring honor to your name. Uh, God, when we're challenged, please guide us. When we are weary, please energize us. And, uh, may the work that we all do, both as council and our staff and and our residents. Uh, always do it in a way that brings hope, life, and greater courage to our community. We ask for blessings upon all of our residents and our families and our administration. And, uh, always give our all of us courage and strength. We ask all this rooted in your love. Uh, and, uh, may it eliminate all our activities that we do in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Ross. Now on to item four presentations. On last meeting, uh, we had scheduled on the agenda. Uh, a presentation for the presidents, and that is the president of the United States. A lifetime achievement award. Uh, that will be conferred upon our very own Mayor Pro Tem Joe Campion. Uh, we thought it important enough, uh, to have him present, uh, for that presentation. Uh, many times in this line of work and in this line of service, there are criticisms. Uh, and we are certainly, uh, well aware of that. Uh, but in, uh, times that there is, uh, acknowledgement of service. Especially coming from, uh, the highest office in our land, we certainly want to stop and pause. So it is, uh, our honor as an entire council, a great privilege, uh, to ask Mr. Robert Young. Mr. Robert Young, welcome. You may approach. Uh, Mr. Campion is going to meet you out in front. Uh, Mr. Robert Young is here, uh, to present our very own Mayor Pro Tem Joe Campion with this president's lifetime achievement award. Let's give Mayor Pro Tem a round of applause.
It's thank you for your kind remarks.
Microphone's there.
Oh, oh, sure. Uh, thanks, man. The President's Volunteer Service Award is a civil award bestowed by the President of the United States. Established by executive order by George W. Bush. The award was established on volunteers that gave hundreds of hours per year helping others. Through the President's Council on Service and Civic Participation. The award can be granted to individuals, families, and organizations located throughout the entire United States. The President's Call to Service Award, also referred to the President's Lifetime Achievement Award, is the most prestigious. And it has been awarded to few Americans to recognize over four thousand hours of extraordinary service. During two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty, the lifetime award was under review. And in twenty twenty one, the lifetime achievement award was made available again. And the Pres- and President Biden issued a congratula- congratulator letters. Were again issued in conjunction with the Corporation for National and Community Service and the Points of Life Institute. My name is Robert Young. I'm a resident of Lamarck. And as a proud board member of the Coast of Plains chapter of the Texas Gulf Coast Region of the American Red Cross. I'm honored to present my friend Joe Campion, fellow volunteer. The Pres- the President's Life achievement, uh, Life Achievement Award. In recognition of your over four thousand hours of volunteer service to your name and still counting. His contributions have spanned various organizations, including the American Red Cross, Catholic Charities, the Jesuitry, among many others. Including, most importantly, service to the Lamarck City Council. So I say congratulations. And last but not least, I think it's appropriate, I just read the first line. From, mayor, you mentioned, coming from the highest office in the land. The American story depends not on any one of us, not on some of us, but on all of us. I congratulate you on speaking on behalf of the president. I'm taking it upon yourself to contribute to the public good. And I'm proud, the president says, to present the lifetime achievement award in recognition. To be exact, four thousand sixty-four hours of service to this great nation. Thanks again, Joe.
I'm surprised he has time to count the number of hours. I, I want to say thank you so much. Robert, it's been a pleasure. Robert is our resident. He also happens to be one of the top executives with Centerpoint. So I promised him nobody would be doing anything ma- bad against him. He helps our community every day and, uh, others throughout the Gulf Coast. He is a proud member of our board and, uh, I just want to say thank you to all, 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 uh, our residents here. Uh, we need volunteers. We're getting old. We need young people. And, uh, volunteers play an important role in, in what we do. All of us, all of us, it's what we do and the needs that we have as a community. So I appreciate that your time and also the, uh, the work that I do with my fellow council members and the residents. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Joe.
Very good, very good. Congratulations again, Mayor Pro Tem. Item four two, award certificate of appreciation, Oscar Del Bosque Alas. Did I say that right? What is that last one? Del Bosque Alas. Welcome, uh, Mr. Oscar. Can I call you Mr. Oscar? And I believe Shannon Bro is going to tell us your story and I will help present the award.
We brought Oscar here today, uh, back in December.
In the mark.
One of our contractors here at Lamarck, uh, that worked on the main, uh, the water lines main. Uh, which water mine replacement, they, uh, had a salt that slid, flaked their neck open and, uh. There was a pretty personal picture that we were able to act that able to get, but, uh. Oscar jumped into action when all that happened. He was able to clean the wound and kind of patch up before he lost too much blood. And quite literally was able to, yeah, stabilize the man so he could make it to the hospital. He's doing okay now. He's back at work. But the person situation was, uh, Oscar helped it to be a little bit better and made sure that guy made it back on that day. So we want to just honor him on that. We want to thank him. But, uh, he's been very humble about it. He really wanted a lot of the attention. We kind of told him, hey, no, this is awesome. You need, you need a, a reward for that. Just kind of let everybody else know that he wrote back. He did so. That's what we're hearing this week. We, we appreciate it.
The certificate is one of appreciation. It is distributed proudly presented to the beach row one more time. I think certainly you're welcome to have words with our community. Thank you all. Uh, I know a lot of y'all appreciate it for what we do, but with micros, uh, they work on pipelines to start with the water going. And I know a lot of y'all see us out there in the cold weather, hot days. We always out there working. So we appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate all the help that y'all give us.
Next, we have two.
Alright, let's see. We have next, uh.
Introduction.
We have introductions, uh, of our development service director and our budget coordinator. Uh, that would be you, uh, acting, uh, manager, Pritchett. You have the floor, sir.
Well, first and foremost, if Mr. Ellison can come up to the front. I saw him. There you are. Mayor and council, as well as to the general public, I am pleased to introduce you to Mr. Jason Ellison. He is one of our newest members of Lamarck at the department head level. Mr. Ellison has been on board for about two weeks now. And he would have taken, um, Ms. Van Stavren's position for developmental services. Uh, I will tell you that Mr. Ellison is the strong silent type first and foremost. Uh, but have sitting sat on the hiring board and grieved him over and over and. Understanding what all the certifications, uh, of a three-page-long certification list are when it comes to Mr. Ellison. I think that we're in a better place than we would have been without him. I am pleased that Mr. Ellison has already been on. Uh, the top of his work from day one. I believe we took him on a tour day one and the work started about thirty minutes into the tour. And without missing a beat, I think there's, uh, even additional people in the room that Mr. Ellison has already done work for. Tried to track down problems of the history as well as some of the issues and. He's sharp as a tack. He just doesn't talk as much as I do. So I'll give Mr. Ellison the floor to introduce himself.
Hello, council. Nice to meet you. Um, citizens of Lamarck. It's nice to be here. Um, it's been a while since I've been in the municipal government, but like K B mentioned, uh, hit the ground running. Uh, excited to be here. Um, just like you said, you know, I listen more than I talk, you know? He can do the talking. I'm just happy to be here. So thank you.
Really good. Welcome.
And our next one is our budget coordinator, and I will ask Ms. Turner to come up as well. Many of you know Ms. Turner that will be coming up, uh, as our finance director who has been with the city of Lamarck going on two years. Uh, and I am pleased to introduce, uh, Ms. Monica Vellis. Uh, to all of you, council and to the general public as well. Uh, Monica comes from us from a long list of different municipalities, and she has always worked in the finance department from. Uh, from accountants, accountant to the city of Allen, uh, sorry, the city of Alvin, the city of Angleton. And the city of Lake Jackson prior to being a new team member of the city of Lamarck. Uh, when it comes to budget, it is a mountain that we will make sure that it's a molehill. Uh, and not only is Ms. Vellis, uh, what we are calling our software guru. Uh, on top of her pleasant demeanor, but the software that. Gave us a little bit of trouble. She has used at all of her previous tenures and is, is educating all of our finance department. Uh, and so I will allow Ms. Turner to speak as well as Ms. Monica Vellis.
Good evening, mayor, council, active city manager. Um, we're excited. We're excited to have someone on board who does have the budget experience. Um, we are starting budget a little earlier this year. Actually, it got kicked off today. So, um, we're kind of just getting ready. You know, we want to get it all ramped up, but finance is very excited about her. Um, we just ready to get started. And y'all just know that we're, we're over there working hard.
We believe it. Ms. Vit, Ms. Vit.
Vellis.
Vellis.
Vellis, yes.
Welcome.
Hello. So, um, like Christine and J B said, I have almost eight years of experience in local government and finance. So kind of had different hats all over. So I'm excited to be here and start the budget process.
Very good.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, let, we want to certainly share with our community, this hire, uh, not the person, but the position. Was approved by this council in response to the community wanting more information and a better budget process experience. Uh, and, and a better handle on our budget throughout the year. And so we wanted to just remind citizens, this is not only your tax dollar at work, but these are your concerns. Uh, attempting to be addressed by this council. And so again, welcome, welcome, welcome. We're at item four, four. This is a presentation for thirty years of dedicated service to Mr. Tyrone Griffin.
I just wanted to say, uh, Tyrone has been here since I've walked in the door. Tyrone's been here since a lot of us have walked in the door. Of thirty years of service, he has done his time. Uh, as mayor asks, we're not letting him go just yet. Uh, I, 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 I would keep Tyrone for, for the duration of my time. Because Tyrone, uh, serves with the servant's heart every day. And, uh, where he started, I'll tell you, I've never seen him this sharp though, because my man. My goodness, right? But Tyrone always has a smile on his face. Uh, I know that he is a man of few words, but when he talks, people listen. And so I am very pleased not only to introduce Mr. Tyrone to mayor and council, the general public. If you have not known him, he's worked in a couple of different departments and where he is at right now is in the utility department. Uh, monitoring our lift stations throughout the city, uh, and, and part of the crew for their wastewater treatment plant. Uh, and again, he does this tirelessly each and every day.
Tyrone, uh. Uh, I hadn't been here thirty years, but I've been around a good number of years. Uh, and many people don't know, this is a council manager form of government. And so the council, uh, that governs this city, uh, does not actually take part in, uh, any administrative duties. Nor do we direct anybody other than a few people, the city attorney, the city clerk, city manager. So we don't have a lot of involvement with, with, with what you do, but we can all attest to seeing you do, uh, tremendous amounts of work. Uh, and every time I've seen you over the years, there's always been a smile on your face. You've always been focused on doing something that's going to bring positive, uh, impacts to our community. And on behalf of our council, certainly we want to thank you for your service to our city. As a resident, we want to praise you for the service that you've given to our city. Uh, and we wish you not only the rest of your time here, but the rest of your time with our great city, whether you are an employee or a retiree. We certainly want to wish you well. Thank you for the thirty years of excellent service. Okay, we will now have a presentation from Stifle. I thought I saw that there, there they are. Hello, Stifle. Welcome back. Steve, I, I always do that.
Mayor, council, uh, council, good to be with you this evening. I'm Brad Engst with Steeple Public Finance. We serve as the city's, uh, municipal bond advisor and, uh, help you with. Uh, financing some projects, keeping, uh, track of your continuing disclosure and financials that go out to the, uh, marketplace. And working with your staff to, uh, come up with some ideas on how to, uh, finance some of your projects that you have at hand. Uh, uh, Mr. Pritchett, I don't know if you have any opening words or if you just want me to dive right in.
The only opening words is that I believe that, um, Brad's team and then, and I have met. Numerous times over the last two weeks to get a better understanding of not only, uh, our bonds. But also our financial status as we move forward, uh, especially when it comes to budget season as well as managing. Uh, the funds of the people. And so I thank you and your team for all of that, making sure that we kind of, uh, don't miss a beat and close the gap. Uh, and so with that, I'll let you take it away.
Great, thank you. I'll add, uh, joined this evening by your, uh, bond counsel, the, the, uh, lawyer that specializes in, in some of the financing. And going through state statutes, et cetera, is here as well. Mr. Jonathan Prels with Bryce. Well, if you have any. and going through state statutes, et cetera, is here as well. Mr. Jonathan Frelz with Brycewell, if you have any legal questions that come up. Is there a clicker or should I just say next slide? Okay, next please. And next, and to the next, there we go. So the city of Lamarck has a couple of different ways that you finance your capital improvements and your facilities. The primary way for government-wide type facilities and essential purpose type facilities is through property tax or your INS tax rate. So that tax rate is used to pay for your facilities, these buildings. We've been asked to look at some options for potential police improvements to the public safety facilities as well as some water improvements, which can be done a couple of different ways, either through that property tax or through the revenues that that system generates. And I'll get into that here in a few minutes. The MNO rate, maintenance and operation rate, is used for the ongoing operations of the city, paying salaries, working to maintain facilities, to maintain your water and infrastructure. And so these two rates together, you'll see in that middle table on this slide, represent the total tax rate. And so that rate is applied against the value, the total assessed value within the city of Lamarck. And so this is the basis for a lot of your revenues and how you go from year to year through your operations. So looking at that left-hand side, the total taxable assessed valuation here this past year was nearly $2 billion here within the city of Lamarck. One thing I'll point out is that, you know, that was a fast growth here over the last five, six years, you've almost doubled in value. That's as the city of Houston starts to come down and fill in all the way down towards the Galveston area, you're seeing a lot of growth here. And so as that growth has occurred in your tax base, you've seen a decline in some of those tax rates because a lower rate is now required to bring in the same amount of dollars because that tax base has grown. So I wanted to point out those tax rates there in the middle column. Looking back to 2021, you had a 55 cent tax rate through the work of this council and staff. You all are down 16 cents to 39 cents. So you've lowered your tax rate for your residents and your taxpayers by 16 cents in total. So a lot of relief there provided. You can see, if you look at the MNO side, it's gone from 47 cents down to 29. So pretty substantial decrease there. Relative to the INS, that's been about an eight cent decline. Those fluctuated back and forth a bit. But you'll see there's been a big decrease. And so I wanted to point that out. As you decrease that, it's bringing in the same amount of dollars as last year. And so we'd like to, you know, working with staff, we're talking about some strategies on how to fund some of your improvements and looking to stabilize those rates. I think you've come down quite a bit. But if you can stabilize those rates or have a little less of a decrease on year-to-year, that can provide some opportunities for you if you need them for some of your facilities. So I'll get into some of those analyses here in a bit, but I just wanted to point out that relationship here first. That's the basis of how all this options kind of take place. So we'll move to the next slide now to look at your existing debt portfolio. These are the bonds, the contractual obligations, general obligation bonds. These are all supported and paid for through that INS tax rate, the interest and sinking fund part of the tax rate. And so currently, there's nine outstanding debt obligations totaling about 33.5 million. These are paid over a variety of years, sometimes from 15 to 25 years, depending on what they were funding and financing. And so they all mature or pay off at different dates. Interest rates have been, are pretty low. We're looking at rates from about 1.8% up to a high of five. You all did a good job here over the last five to 10 years of being able to lock in those low interest rates while the market was low and advantageous for those type of items. So this is just a brief summary of those total items and the amounts outstanding. I mentioned it was 33.5. That actually was at the time you issued the bonds. Today, there's about 25 remaining. So you have paid down a good chunk of those. Moving to the next slide, and really I'm going to scoot through this area. This is detail for each one of those debt obligations. So I'm not going to go into some of the details, but it talks about the semi-annual payment structure. You're making payments every six months on this, the underlying interest rates, and then some other details. So I'm going to move ahead to slide nine, please. This is a look at your payment schedule over the coming years. And so on the left-hand side, this is a look at today and the payments coming for this year. Each different color represents one of those different debt obligations. You stack them up to give you your total payments, and it's about 2.2 million per year. Again, you'll see that that represents each one of those debt obligations, which are color-coded and listed on the right. One thing I want to point out is kind of the step-down nature of this debt portfolio. That's done intentionally. It's done and it's meant to be able for the city to take on a new project when that payoff occurs or that step down without increasing your total payments on an annual basis so that it doesn't affect your taxpayers. But you'll notice this is about five years out. So before you, in five years, you'll actually pay off the 2017 GO bond and the 2014 GO bond will both be paid off at that time. So that's one way. We always try and build in additional capacity. The other way you gain capacity is when your tax base grows and those revenues grow, which we'll show you a scenario of that here in just a few minutes. Moving ahead to the next slide. The city has the credit rating, much like each one of us has our own credit rating. If you want to go get a credit score, when you have bonds that are sold to the capital markets or to investors, we get a bond rating. And so the city is rated a double A minus. That's a very strong rating. It provides for very low cost of capital. And some of the notes that S and P Standard and Poor's who provides that rating are provided here below. And then there's also a little bit of additional payments the city makes to the Gulf Coast Water Authority. You've taken on some loans through them, where they issued bonds for larger projects and more than just Lamarck. And you pay a percentage of those back. So those contractual obligations are rated by Moody's, and they provided the rest of that detail there on the second half of that page. Moving to the next slide, this is a look at some additional contractual obligations I just described that you have with the Gulf Coast Water Authority. These are paid from the utility fund and the revenues from that. So there's, these are not paid with property tax. They come from the revenues that come off that system. And so there was three different obligations taken on in 2023. The city owes about 18% to, down to about 14.6 for a third one there with that entity. Those payments total about 275, 275,000 per year. Okay, moving ahead to the next section and slide 13. This is one of the big items we're here to talk to you about. About a year ago, the city applied through the Texas Water Development Board for some financial assistance. They have programs that provide low cost and subsidize kind of funding through the state legislature and government. And the city of Lamarck was successful in gaining an award. In just this past December, you can see here the press release talking about the Water Development Board providing an award for up to 9.985 million in their low-cost and interest rate Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Using this program, they cite here right in the middle, will save approximately 1.9 million compared to going to the capital markets and doing your own bond deals. So very good news, very good opportunity, and we're here to talk to you about kind of what the next steps mean with this. This would be factored into the budget that you're starting to work on. And this would be repaid solely through the utility revenues. So this is no property tax increase for this type of project as contemplated and as approved by the Water Development Board. So moving to page 14, that's a little more information here on the Water Development Board and the consideration of this loan moving forward. As I mentioned, in December, December 17th, to be exact, that's when the Water Development Board approved, providing the city's financial assistance and the loan program in accordance with the application that this council approved. It would be based on-
Did you say we approved an application or we have to approve an application?
About a year ago, when you applied to the Water Development Board, they require council to acknowledge that an application is being sent. You have not entered into this loan agreement.
There you go. All right, all right. Okay.
Yes, sir.
This is a big thing with our council, and so we wanted to make sure that we haven't accepted anything yet. That's important to our community. I'm sorry. I wanted to clarify that. Proceed.
No, good point. That is accurate. This council has not entered into a loan for this water project.
Thank you.
One thing I want to highlight, the program, Water Development Board Clean Water Program, provides approximately, based on current rates that they're providing, a 2.24% interest cost. Looking at what we estimated would cost the city to go out and do this project and financing on your own, that would be about a 4.57%. So over 2% savings. That's what provides that 1.8 million in savings that we provided and showed on the previous slide. I want to pause there for a moment, and I'm going to ask Jonathan Frelz, your bond counsel, to maybe speak to this program as well. We do a lot of these for cities around the state, and I just want to make sure if he gets a chance to describe the programs.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Really, I really appreciate that. So the Clean Water State Revolving Fund is one of several financial assistance programs that the Texas Water Development Board undertakes. All of these are approved by the legislature and are codified in statute and also in the administrative code and how they run. It is an extremely competitive process. So you filed an application in order to qualify for the loan. Once they've reviewed those applications, they then rank them and make awards based on those rankings. And so you did receive them at that point. Received the award, but you have not entered into it yet. So the next part of the process, once they've awarded those, is to come back to you and say, you've been awarded X amount of dollars for this project. We would like to provide that financial assistance to you. In order to do that, we have to have evidence of your receipt of that financial assistance. And so there's some obligation that they receive back from you in order to evidence the fact that you've issued that. So there are a number of ways to do that. The most common one that you see is the use of certificates of obligation in order to evidence that loan. So you would issue a certificate of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board to evidence the financial assistance that they are giving to you. And it just says, you've loaned us X amount of dollars as financial assistance, and we'll pay that back at the interest rate that Brad demonstrated to you. So this is the way that it's typically done. The reason COs are typically used for this process is even though you intend to pay these through revenues in the water and sewer system. So let's be very clear about that. This would not be a tax, a tax payment. This would be for the revenues of the water and sewer system. By using COs, it's the least expensive way to finance them. If you use COs, you don't have to do a reserve fund that goes along with them. If you did water and sewer revenue debt, just on a standard loan basis, you'd have to do a reserve fund, which costs extra money in order to fund that. You also don't have to do a, you also don't have to do a rate covenant. You can have a one-to-one level as opposed to a rate covenant of about 1.25, which is pretty typical of a water and sewer revenue bond. So again, it lessens the impact on ratepayers if you do that. So that's why most cities use that mechanism. Again, it's not the only one you can use, but that's the one that most have used, and that's why, because it's a lower impact ratepayers in order to go that process. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have, but that's a basic summary of how the program is.
I think we're going to, are you going to continue your presentation and then we'll come back for questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Jonathan. All right, moving ahead to the next slide. So let's look, what does this mean for the utility fund? In doing our calculations and looking at what the average payment would be, we're estimating 620,000 a year over a 20-year period for these 9.9 million dollars in projects. Looking at your current budget and the analysis that the Water Development Board did through this application process, they estimate that you have 1.5 million of available revenues per year roughly. That changes from year to year depending on what your expenditures are in capital, one-time CapEx-type spend down. But 620,000 a year is what we're talking about. And again, we estimate, Water Development Board estimates as well that 1.5 million of revenue available to capture and work to pay those, make those payments. On page 16, the following side, this demonstrates that the net system revenues available for debt service, that 1.546 in the left-hand column. We look at the current debt payments that the city needs to make. That's the obligations with the Gulf Coast Water Authority. Those total about 275, 275,000 per year. The remaining revenues available for the loan, about 1.2, 1.3, provide about two times the amount of revenue that's needed in order to make these payments for this sizable loan with the Water Development Board. So with that, I think I'd like to pause. We have a little bit of additional information I'll get into here. We've done some analysis as far as the public safety building, but I do think this topic deserves some focus and maybe questions now. If you so choose, if you'd like me to get through the full presentation before we move on or before we take questions.
How much more of the presentation do you have?
It's probably another five minutes talking about, okay.
Yeah.
So next slide, please. So this is looking at options of the city for different types of projects. We do recommend that water and sewer and wastewater type projects are funded through utility revenues. These are broader type projects that we evaluated, that the city may be interested in, public safety, roads, other type of needs. And this would be funded with that INS tax rate, property tax type rate. And so this type of financing, I wanted to point out a couple of things. Public finance and really the use of long-term debt by municipality allows you to complete capital projects today, a large type of project that's in the millions and have a repayment schedule that spreads the cost of that project over the life of the project. So that does a couple of things. That works with your budget on an annual basis. So it's in a more, it's at a level that you can afford on a year-to-year basis. It also pairs the payment of that project with the users of that project. And what I mean by that, the people that live here during the time that facility is being used, if it's a new police station, the people that live here are paying for it as it is used, they use those services. And the other way you would do that is save up cash and pay for it all at once. Now, if you save up cash, that's from people who lived here over the past 10 to 20 years. They may move away and not get the benefit of that project. So public finance, working with municipalities, this is the way it is approached, pay-as-you-use type approach. So a couple of different ways you can do that. You can do it through different debt products. There's tax notes, there's certificates of obligation, and then there are general obligation bonds, which are going to a- Which are going to a vote and asking your voters to to consider the improvements. And approve the city to authorize this as well. So I mentioned earlier about the debt portfolio as as you pay off bonds, you're going to have more space. What we've done is look at some scenarios that look at the increasing value within the city and holding your tax rate steady. One other thing I wanted to point out before we move to those scenarios. A few years back, the legislature here in Texas enacted Senate Bill Two. Senate Bill Two is the rules surrounding your levy and your budgets that you can. You're limited to growing that budget at three and a half percent each year. In past years, it was up to eight percent. And so as your as your city grows faster, sometimes your services may exceed that three and a half percent. We've seen here with the city of Lamarck, your 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 tax base has almost doubled in five, six years. So really, that's put some constraint on some of our clients, some cities around Texas. For good or for better or for worse, it's put some constraints. And so we've seen some. Of our clients and cities moving some of their deferred maintenance projects, using. Different financing products and the INS rate to take care of those as opposed to. Your M and O budget being for, you know, police salaries and staff salaries and ongoing day to day. So. Just wanted to to point that out. You're working within a little bit of a constrained environment compared to. A few years back when I first started evaluating some of this on your behalf. Okay. Let's get to the numbers here. Next page. So based on your current figures. You've been levying the tax rate that's needed just to bring in the the bare minimum dollars to pay your debt service. It's not necessarily producing enough to take on additional at this point. So that's the zero cent INS increase. And so in a couple of years, if you kept it at today's rate, that ten cents, eleven cents. We would we would anticipate as the community grows, it starts to produce a little bit of revenue that can be used. To take on about three point nine million of of projects out here and out in a couple of years. If you were to look at a five cent increase, whether that be. After talking to the voters or other other methods, there's about five cents would equate to nineteen point five million in projects if you needed. And then lastly, the last scenario, ten cent increase could provide for about thirty seven million of projects. So. So let's look a little deeper at what those mean. So nineteen cent or page nineteen, please. So this is looking at your current tax rate that purple line on top is the revenue that's needed. To pay for debt service. And if you keep your tax rate steady. And the community continues to grow at the rate it has, we anticipate. You'll have this upward trajectory of revenues. You'll see on the left hand side, the the blue bar, the dark blue bar represents your current debt service payments. And so that that purple or that top dotted line again is your tax rate. The tax rate is is just where it needs to be. The payoff this year's debt payments. So what we're showing is if you keep it, if you stabilize that rate, it will start to produce revenues as you grow. And you'll see the slash light blue lines that represents revenue that may be available in the future to take on projects. So that's the zero cent or keeping your tax rate where it is today. Moving ahead, here's some of the math. It's that same chart that I just showed you. Done numerically. I'm not going to dive into some of these details, but moving to the five cent. So the five cent you'll see down at the left hand side. Your your total debt payment today is the dark blue. If you were you were to raise or look at a five cent. INS tax increase, it produces more revenue today. And that's how you're able to do a nineteen and a half million potential bond issuance in the future. That's represented by that lighter shade of blue moving forward. And then moving forward. Two slides, please. What would that mean to your to your homeowners? We wanted to just give you an idea of what the tax impact is with the five cent tax rate. The average home value, looking at the bottom there of the table, two hundred and twenty four thousand here this past year. Here in the city of Lamarck, that would equate to about a nine dollar and thirty four cent increase a month. On that home payment. And then there's another few scenarios up top, one hundred and fifty thousand value home. Two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. On the high end, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would see a monthly. Increase of about fourteen and a half dollars. So we just wanted to give you an idea as y'all look at options and and think about. What it's going to cost potentially to take on some of these projects. And then we have a ten cent scenario. I want to show you on the following slide. This, of course, increases those revenues even more. You're able to fill. Those revenues with about thirty seven million dollar project. Again, these are just some rough parameters. We wanted to let you know. What it equates to, what it would take to to accomplish these type or these size of projects. Moving forward, two slides. This is the tax impact. It's roughly twice what you saw for the for the five cent increase. It's about eighteen dollars. Sixty seven cents for the average home here in Lamarck on a monthly basis. And then on the high end that we that we show here, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home would be about twenty nine dollars seventeen cents on a monthly basis. And then our last slide I have for you is the next, please. Just wanted to give you an idea if the council decided to pursue. A bond election and let your voters decide on some of these. We wanted to give you. An update on what that would require. There's two times a year here in Texas. In May, there's an election. Then in November, there's an election. That May election window is closing pretty quickly here. You have to call that election very early. And then give some time to hopefully do some town halls, have the transparency, talk with with your constituents and and. Taxpayers. At this point, November is probably more likely and more. Kind of successful of a of a plan for you all if you wanted to pursue that. But there is, I guess, I just want to point out a slight chance if you wanted to go in May, you could get that done here. Potentially in early February. All right, I'll pause there. We can get into some details. I think. About whatever you'd like.
Sure. Vinnie, it was about ten minutes. Who wants to go first? No, I'm talking to council. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Does anyone want to?
I don't know how how bond election is going to do in the city right now. Even though we do need a new police station, everything. Money's tight and. You can guarantee that my paycheck is going to go up eighteen dollars a month every year. Talk about it rather be me get twenty two. That way I can at least keep an extra couple bucks in my pocket. It it's rough on everybody out there at the moment. So I don't know if this will be the year for a bond election or. Twenty six or twenty seven would be a better look into what we need to do, but. We still have CO bonds from twenty fourteen. That are out there that never really. Found out how, why they're still out there and why what they were used for. And that's why we have people out asking for a forensic audit because. Never been able to have a good feel on why those bonds haven't been used up and why there's still money sitting in the bank. If we do approve for this almost ten million dollars from the. Texas Water Board. How much are we looking at for rate increase to our our citizens when it comes to utility bills?
Based on your past year's budget, you actually have room within the current levels to be able to take on this project. You know, if there's other needs and that would come up, come through with the budgeting process that may come to light. But based on past years, you have space to do it without a rate increase.
Let me jump in there because I wanted to. Hold on just a minute, James. You just said that there's room within the current rate, right?
We can historical finishing financials. Yes, sir.
So I guess my question is more of a layperson. If if there's room in the current rate. That means that we are somehow. Perhaps. Recouping some sort some some revenue from the current rate. That that we're we're bringing in more than we're expending to provide water service, water and sewer service. Would it be safe to say? That we're bringing in more than we're actually expending. We're generating more revenue than we're actually expending with the current water rate. Is that what you just said to me?
It depends on the year. Sometimes that money goes into the Capital Improvement Fund, but based on some past. Numbers that is that is true. Now, there's several different. Projects and loans that are being paid for, water projects that are being paid for right now. From the general fund and from the INS rate. So.
Okay. But as it sits, you what you're saying to to me is that we. We're probably generating more revenue than we're spending this year. Is that what you're saying? I want to be I want to be clear.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that for for all of us that are listening. I'm sorry, James.
That was my next question.
Joe, I'm gonna bring you in.
Was you're telling me, looking at the graph that we've. Managed to bank six hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we could have been using. That's what it seemed like. It said to me.
Yeah. Let's let's James, if if I can let Joe ask a question and then we'll reclaim your time. Go ahead, Joe.
Finance is never easy. It's never easy for me. It's. It's certainly in the municipal side. It's. It's something that deserves a lot of time to understand. When when I joined this council. And. We were made aware of the fact, and this is your the numbers that that you have available. The city's. Maintenance side. Was supporting the utility. Okay, this I want to give a history. That's why I'm keeping some old people around is important up here. Okay? And so what was happening at that time, even with. The higher tax rate. The city of Lamarck was using its general revenues to support the utility side. It was something that the city had been doing for a period, just that was regular practice. And then we had a serious discussion. At that time, I challenged first when Gulf Coast Water Authority. Brought to us a proposal for us to purchase water. And I love it. We have all these tapes now on YouTube, so I can bring it up, and they even give me transcripts. And I said at that time, I was opposed to that. Why? Because we were losing sixty percent of our water. To to corroded pipes. And poor infrastructure maintenance. And. What the city had historically done was just go out and buy more water. Not to deal with the the issue. It's like I have heart disease, for example, and I'm not going to avail myself of the great medical team. That are at the medical center to deal with with my heart disease. And the problems in my circulatory system. And that's what the city had. So I I asked that and I opposed that purchase at that time. And I opposed it as well because of the obligation that we we heard about, that we assumed. On the bonds that the Gulf Coast Water Authority was issuing. And I pointed that out as well. I said. The city is taking on this debt, even though it's a portion. And the guys were here. They followed up from Gulf Coast. Boy, they brought in all the team. Because initially, we didn't pass it, and then they came again. I still voted against it. But so gradually, thank you with. With the leadership then of the past city manager, we had a serious discussion about let's deal with the water loss. Let's deal with realistic water rates. Let's deal with development of a self supporting utility fund is what other cities do. And and it's called financial planning. And in financial planning, yes, that's 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 planning. It's planning. You will have in that planning times where you have more money. In terms of the revenue to the utility side, then you have the expenditures. It all balances. Now you'll see the expenditure side coming up. And then what we're going to do? Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna now. But let's, we have to rebate all this money. No. It's planning. It's financial planning. And Lamarck is guilty of that. I've been around. It's just, it's it's. By the seat of my pants, financial planning. What we're doing here is in the utility side is fine. We have, at this point, this revenue of one point five million available per year report. In terms to service debt. Six, six hundred and twenty thousand would service the nine point nine that would be utilized, what? To fix, continue to fix the aging infrastructure in this city. Which at the two point two percent interest rate versus if. It's work that has to be done. It has to be done versus if we did this by going out and putting it out. A higher interest rate of approximately four point five seven percent that you indicated in your report. So I don't, I I'm just saying these things because I don't want us here to get. Get confused. Our discussion should be, how do we maintain sound fiscal planning? We started upon that. Mr. Ross, that's how you got involved in terms of council and activities on that side. You attended those meetings religiously. So that's how I want to make that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
I just. I'm. Now, last budget season was a little little crazy. I don't remember seeing six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That could be used last year out of our utility fund. Just to fund this. I mean.
One of the changes to that, Mr. Ross, is the revenues of the utility fund when it comes to Republic.
Okay. Thank you.
In the amount of, and Shannon was looking in the room to see if he's here, but it's. Roughly around around that amount. So that would be where that changes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to to add, if I can. Because there, because Water Development Board has identified one point five, it doesn't mean that money wasn't being used last year. They will back out, for instance, like one time capital expenditure. So last year, if you had. For the last few years, if y'all had deferred maintenance needs. Those type of revenues are appropriated through the budget process on an annual basis. And so. They may look at that and say, well, you've you paid. Four fifty for a list station this year. Do you need to do that again next year? You have the decision if you want to do a bigger project or if you want to continue to do some of those deferred maintenance type projects that may use that. One and a half million on an annual basis.
Yeah, James. Ms. Anthony, did you have anything?
No, what 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 I would like to find out is is possibly do a workshop on it so that we can have. Some clear understanding because you said a lot of terms and that's your wheelhouse, of course. But we want to make sure that our residents understand because this is kind of like a. Do or die type of situation because I infrastructure needs so much help. At this at this time, and I understand what what you're saying, but at the same time. This has been kicked down the can down the road so many times by previous administrations. And I think I agree with what what Joe is with Councilman and company saying and Ross about if we do this in a proper. Financial model way that we did before. I think we can get get the goals done because we do, especially in my district that I represent, we do have some major issues with sewer and and things of that water loss. And we've and though we've we've taken care of some. we 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 still have a lot more to do. So I think if we workshop it a little bit and talk about it. But I do know that this is necessary, and it's something that we can't kick down the road any longer.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I wanted to ask about a couple of things. Page, page seventeen.
Yes, sir.
Seventeen, Standard and Poor. And in in two sentences or less, can you share with our community who and what Standard and Poor is? And what credibility they might lend to this discussion?
Standard and Standard and Poor's is one of four rating agencies, national firm that rate bonds throughout the country. So you have Standard and Poor's, Moody's, Fitch, and a fourth is Croll. Standard and Poor's and Moody's are considered the top two. Anytime you're going to sell bonds, investors require that a third party, a rating agency, takes a look at your qualifications and your credit metrics. And so they assign a bond rating to it, and it gives comfort to the investors to buy your bonds to provide a lower interest rate and cost of capital. And so even though you're at a double A minus, that's, you know, just one level away from triple A, which is the best. You're, you know, the cost of capital is approximately four point six percent based on that double A rating. And so that's a tax-exempt borrowing interest rate. You know, you've heard probably out there in the market mortgages are, you know, seven percent. That's because that's a taxable type of of product. So Standard and Poor's, again, is one of the top two rating agencies, very well respected and by investors, but also the the community, the public finance community.
And and in essence, Standard and Poor's, they assess the financial health of an organization.
Yes, sir.
And so you just said to me that one of the, if not the very best organizations to assess financial health of organizations has assessed our organization to be financially healthy. Did you just say that to me?
That is correct.
It says, Standard and Poor's says that that our city's health, financial health has an adequate economy, that this city has strong management, good financial policies and practices. You just said to me that this city, according to Standard and Poor's, has adequate budgetary performance, a healthy general fund with a large drawdown in two thousand and twenty-two. You said to us that this city, our city, is very strong in budget liquidity, which means that we have very high cash levels compared to expenses. And you said to me and to us, to this community, that Standard and Poor's has suggested that we have a weak debt profile, which means that high net direct debt levels. I said all of that to say, this is yet another organization that has shared with our community that this city is in reasonably good financial health. Would you agree with that?
I would absolutely agree and and probably up that statement a little bit. I'd say you're in in good financial health and a double A rating is is above average.
Very good. So now I wanted to ask you a question about this water loan. I thought you said, or maybe Jonathan said, something to the effect of one way that we would possibly be able to do this is through the issuance of certificates of obligation. Jonathan, Jonathan, did you say that? I don't know the answer to the to this question, so I'm asking it. I'm not going anywhere with this. I'm just asking. Certificates of obligations. Are they not limited to or tied to, that's a better way to to put it, are they essentially tied to property tax?
So they do carry a property tax pledge with them. However, the way that these are structured with the Water Development Board, so in your application, you submitted, it has a tax pledge, but it also has a pledge of your revenues of your water and sewer system. You've indicated that they will be paid from the revenues of the water and sewer system, which is absolutely the way that most of the cities that we work with that do Water Development Board loans, they pay those from their water and sewer system, even though they're doing COs. So with that tax pledge, which you're not not going to use, it's there, but you will not use it. Well, ultimately, what that allows for, as I was mentioning earlier, is better financial terms. So you don't have to, so for example, you would often, when you're doing a revenue bond, if you're just doing a straight revenue bond, have to do a debt service reserve fund that could be up to ten percent of the cost of the bonds or the maximum annual debt service amount. So if you had a three hundred thousand dollar annual debt service payment, you would have to finance that additional three hundred thousand dollars and put it into a reserve fund. So that would be an additional cost to the taxpayer. If you had a situation, you you may also have certain certain limitations on what your debt service coverage needs to be in order to issue additional debt, or what your what your rates would have to be in order to in order to support the covenants that the Water Development Board would want on a revenue side. So if you did pure revenue debt without the tax pledge, you'd have to have rates that produce one point two five times the debt service cost in your O and M, right? And so in this case, you have a one-to-one coverage level, just because you're doing it through a CO process. So that's the big that's the that's the reason why you would use that mechanism is that, yes, we are going to pay this through revenues of the water and sewer system. But by using the CO mechanism, it makes it a cheaper process than doing a pure revenue bond.
But in essence, it's the CEO is still tied to property tax. And we're using that as 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 collateral, if you will.
Well, you will have a pledge of property taxes to it, but you will not collect, assess or collect a property tax in a given year. You will be paying that from your water and sewer system. And so what the way the way the document will be written, when we write it, it would say, to the extent that you budget in any given year in your water and sewer system to pay the debt service from the water and sewer system, there is no levy or or assessment or collection of a tax for that particular year, because you pay for it from the other side. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I'm just trying to get, make sure that we 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 educate council as well as as our our community members. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. I wanted to to certainly say this about about the the discussion that's being brought back and forth on the council with you guys. Historically, our city has elected to purchase more water because we all know that it's cheaper to purchase more water. Hundreds of thousands of dollars versus tens of millions of dollars. And so that was the route of previous councils. And it was a route that was steered, directed, and driven by this community. This community does not like higher taxes or higher tax rates. We do not like, one of the bigger issues in our city has been water rates. We believe many resident, many of our residents believe that historically our water rates have been too high, even though we have not raised them in in various situations. And so that's just background as to how we got to where we are in this situation. Secondly, me personally, I have pledged to to not add any significant debt to our community members, whether it be through property tax or 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 any other types of mechanisms, without a vote of the people. Because this is an important thing in our community. Does not reflect on how the council will proceed. I'm only one vote. I will certainly respect council's wishes and do my my role, my job. If in fact, council chooses differently than what I believe. But but these are just some things that I wanted to clear up. This is not an easy conversation, especially when you're dealing with 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 debt. Nobody likes debt in our own personal homes, nor do we like debt in our businesses. Certainly, we don't like debt in our government. And so this is a good discussion. Thank you, guys, for laying this out. There are a lot of choices. Don't think that you can go wrong with discussion and with exchange of ideas. And so we want to thank you for 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 being here tonight, for helping us to understand this just a little bit better. Did you have something you want to add? We're gonna, we're gonna go with a couple more minutes, and then we're gonna round this up.
Clarification. The offer little history. The Texas developed this Water Development Fund within the legislature, and then we had a, in fact, a an election, a constitutional amendment was passed on this because of the challenges for communities with aging infrastructure. And they, and as a savings to taxpayers, the residents, let's find the best vehicle out there where the state can use its power to lower interest rates and and therefore do a service for communities that have the need. And and I'm proud that Lamarck made the list, because I know, talking with my other members of the Houston Public Area Council, other meetings, a lot of communities were applying for this. And this is a significant achievement that we made the cut. That's number one. Number two, the the timeframe now, by way of response, what is that? For us to accept the this.
We have a little bit of time. They came to us and said, you need to be finished and closed at the latest December thirty first of this year. In order to, we're bringing this to you now, though, because of just their funding cycle and trying to get ahead of the budgets and and letting you all.
It's the clear December thirty first, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And and then and then we have, I'll go back, in our previous documents, we have the scope of work that was this was submitted. I have that. I remember looking through that. And I think we all need to have that discussion, that workshop, remind people what this is, our residents, what it's for. But but definitely, I I for one am excited about the opportunity, and it also is imperative for us to continue to build, as I've said, and I know it's a broken record for some, but I have to keep saying that Lamarck historically did not treat in our accounting, the utility as a separate fund. We were just we're just underwriting all the expenses there out of general revenue. And 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 this is an opportunity for us to continue sound financial planning. That's that's, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
You are most welcome. We're just one last con. We're here to give you options, right?
Absolutely.
Your choices, policies, but this is certainly the cheapest option that financing that you can find.
Mayor question, and if if anyone can answer this. If I understood properly, we have two things. Number one, we're going to be making a decision with regard to accepting the the offer from the Water Development Fund. That's one thing. And then the separate one is that we still will be having a separate discussion with regard to if and when, or shall we schedule a bond election for, and and then identifying the needs or that would be.
Absolutely, yeah.
Those are the two things is correct.
The the one thing I would add on the bond election piece, if you look at a November election for next year, there'll be an early August timeframe for calling that election. So you want to build back your public comment, different things like that, and enough time to prepare for that, if that's a direction you ultimately want to go.
Very good. Thank you. Oh, my friend. Item five, citizens' participation. Limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who signed up may speak to council. Limited to three minutes. Wishing to speak, give the mayor, the presiding officer, your full legal name, your address, and the item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are visiting with us via phone. If you are visiting with us via Zoom on a smartphone, tablet, or computer, there should be a microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen. If you're attending here in person, when your name is called, you may approach the center aisle and speak at the podium. Vinny, are there any persons online wishing to speak? Very good. We move from those online to those that are here with us today. Mr. Richard Holcomb. Welcome, Richard. Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Richard Holcomb, twenty-seven oh eight, Maynoo Drive, Lamarck, Texas. Mayor, I'm here maybe I guess complain a little bit about the last council meeting. Matter of fact, you've noticed I don't have my hat on no more, because an older gentleman made the comment that he didn't believe, you know, my hat was said right last time. Because I don't believe in insulting nobody. I don't, I don't believe in it. I don't want nobody insulting me. I don't want nobody insulting you, Mr. Campion, anybody. But what I witnessed the last time about that gentleman that was here, the way he attacked a sitting council member and even brought the man's wife into into his complaints or his comments or whatever, that was flat out wrong. And I really thought that any minute that you would stop the meeting and have him removed, which should have been done for any, if he he insulted anybody up there, he should have been dealt with. And I'm glad to see he's not here tonight. Maybe that's over with. But I just wish for the taxpayers, citizens of Lamarck, that y'all could get on with the business and make Lamarck great again. That's all I was trying to say with my hat. I wasn't trying to insult nobody.
Sure.
And and I apologize to that older gentleman, if I ever see him, you know. I wasn't trying to promote something. I was just wanting to make Lamarck great again, that's all.
Sure.
And thank y'all. I wish y'all good progress from this time forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is Sylvia Joyner Crawford. Hello, Ms. Sylvia. Name and I said hello, Ms. Sylvia, you may come. Name and address for the record. Welcome.
Sylvia Joyner Crawford. Hello, everybody. I don't have a lot of money. But my property is located here in Lamarck at seventeen oh two Kansas Street. And I've been paying a thousand dollars a month. And I'm on a fixed income. And I have been doing this for over a year. Seventeen oh two Kansas Street is my childhood home. I grew up there. And my sister, before she passed away, she was keeping up the taxes. And after she passed away, I didn't realize that the taxes went into arrears. And I would like to hold on to it. And I'll do whatever I need to do. I'll continue paying a thousand dollars a month to hold on to it. And I'd like you to please consider that. When they first started sending notices that the property was in arrears, the taxes were in arrears, I was not made aware of it. As I said, my sister passed away. When I became, I was never served any papers. I was living in Houston. I had brain surgery, and I was in Houston with my son. And when I found out that everything was in arrears, I immediately started paying a thousand dollars a month. And now I'm asking to please help me hold on to my family property, my property, because I intended to build my home, build another home there. Because while I was in Houston, they towed down the house. And we were still being charged as if there was a homestead there. And it was never addressed. Just like I never received any notices about the taxes because they said they didn't have my address. And I was told that's why I didn't personally receive any of this, these notices. I have received, uh, notices now because I gave them my address the last time I came here. And I would like to hold on to my land because I was gonna build a house there. And if there's anything that can be done, I would appreciate it. Had I been notified in a timely manner, I would have immediately addressed the issue. But as soon as I was made aware, I started paying a thousand dollars a month and I will continue if I could hold on to my land.
Thank you, Ms., Ms., uh, Crawford. That's, that's, uh, your time, Ms. Crawford. Ms. Crawford. Uh, point of information, this council only assesses a tax rate. Um, certainly the city manager, city attorney can direct you, uh, to those entities that will help you uh, with the dilemma. We, we, we hear you, we feel for you, and I can't go beyond what I'm saying now. We hear you, we feel for you, but we have no power other than setting a tax rate. I, I can't, I can't discuss it with you. They're gonna, could you?
Yes.
Could you? He's gonna visit with you, man. Thank you. Mr. Rashad Loftus. Welcome, Mr. Loftus. Name and address for the record.
Rashad Loftus, uh, Johnson Street here in Lamarck. Um, I want to first say that, uh, professionalism and civility is, is needed here. I'm tired of coming to these council meetings and people arguing and fighting about stuff that has nothing to do about city business. I am sick of it. Matter of fact, I'm disgusted that this council continually engages in that type of behavior. And it's time for it to stop. And if it don't stop, somebody gonna get recalled. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna be the one to pull the paperwork. Cause I don't want to come and sit here and hear it. Start doing the people's business. That's what you was elected to do. And if you ain't here to do the people business, get out of public service. There's a lot of things wrong in this city. Ditches need dug. Street signs need replaced. Code enforcement. Let's handle that type of business. Any personal vendettas y'all got against each other? Handle it outside of this courtroom, uh, outside of this, uh, city building. Cause I don't want to come here and hear about it. Handle it on Facebook. Don't handle it on my time. Don't handle it on taxpayers' time. I am sick of it. And if you don't believe me, keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Carolyn Small. Welcome, Ms. Carolyn. Name and address for the record, please.
Carolyn Small, 1121 Prune Street. Uh, his words exactly. Um, I've been reviewing some of the old meetings because last time it got heated at the end. And I heard something really disturbing to me is that someone said they can write whatever they want about their political opponent. And none of y'all are running against each other, right? Is what I understand. Uh, Ms. Yancy ran against Mr. Medina. You ran against Mr. Camacho. None of y'all are political opponents and I'm got on a, got off the old dictionary. And opponent, they also said political rivalry, rivalry. I've been going back over videos hearing political rival, political adversary, political opponent, over and over and over, and, uh, directed towards y'all. I have to address all of you. I understand that. Um, none of y'all are running against each other. None of y'all are supposed to be fighting each other. You're all council members. So once again, we got back in the dictionary. Member means fragment, part, piece, portion, section, segment, a functional unit composing a body. A functional unit. Okay. Every person up there who has been voted in is a functional unit composing a body, which is our government. Um, and I'm not seeing a lot of function. I'm seeing a lot of, of the vendettas. It's the same stuff that's been going on for forever. If you voted in a council person who calls all the other members uh, opponents or rivals, or you, you're that person that failed you. You voted in the wrong person. If that's your council person, I would say maybe shoot him an email and ask him to get back to business. Because we can't do this every single meeting. Uh, like I said, every, and like Rashard said, you can say whatever you want online. None of us want to hear it anymore. None of us like care. We want y'all to get back to business. But if you have, if your council person is up here, call in his team members, his rivals, then that's what is the point? That's not a council member. I'm trying not to look at the chair when I talk. Y'all remember when, uh, Clint Eastwood yelled at that empty chair? Never mind. I'm trying not to do that. I'm nervous. Anyway. But anyway, yeah, that's why I'm getting it. I just wanted to say that, and I reviewed old videos. Like Mr. Campion said, you can go back through YouTube and you can just watch it. And I just kept hearing those words over and over. And I'm like, why did you get elected into council? If you're not going to be, uh, of the part of that functional unit composing a body? Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Small. I am going to try to say this, forgive me if I mispronounce it. Sheila, is that Len- Lenexis? Lanacy, I'm sorry. Sheila Lanacy.
Here in council.
Hello, how are you?
I'm fine. I'm Sheila Lanacy. I live at 2515 Boss Street, Lamarck.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, make some comments. Uh, we've had a lot of new building, a lot of new homes in our neighborhood. And, uh, I'm just noticing that the properties are going downward. We've got ditches on Boss Street that are completely blocked. We have neighbors that do not mow their lawns. They're three feet high. I've lost my dog in one of the neighborhood lawns. Now, uh, we've got, uh, which I don't understand, seems to be a car business, which is on the corner of Lake Road and Boss Street. This gentleman has as many as 15 vehicles on his property. Now, I wasn't aware that you could run a business at your residential home. Now, maybe I'm not aware of that. Uh, the only last thing is that our brand new sidewalks that we got all the way down like Lake Road, they're all being overgrown with grass. They are disappearing. We don't have them anymore. They're gone. And last but not least, fix the light on Cedar Road. It keeps going on one day and off the next, and on one day and off the next. And that's all I have to say. If we could maybe pay attention to a couple of little things in our neighborhoods, especially where these new homes are being built. We've got these hundred thousand dollar homes being built and the property is looking like five dollars. So if we could just maybe take a little attention and bring back neighborhoods and make them look good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Those of us that, that are attending, uh, for the first time, we are looking at you and we can't respond. I wanted to say that to Ms. Crawford. Uh, we can't respond to you because it's a violation of meeting. The only thing we can do is make a correction here or there. So we hear you, we empathize, but we are not allowed by law to respond. Yes, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Joshua Pritchett. Name and address for the record, sir. Welcome.
Address is 2801 Gulf Freeway. Uh, I wanted to step down and to take my three minutes as a private citizen first and foremost, because anything that I say in the next three minutes has absolutely nothing to do with my current role at the city of Lamarck. Uh, for the last five years, I've been here in Galveston County for just over seven, but for the last five years, I have done something called Night to Shine. Night to Shine is in essence, a prom for those with, um, physical and mental disabilities. Uh, anybody who knows me in my private life, my church, my faith, uh, and my family kind of lead the way, not only in my job, but in every, all the boards that I sit on and all the above. Um, I wanted to have separation from my job, as I said this, because this is my heart. Um, I have five sisters, no brothers. Y'all pray for me. Uh, it's been a lifelong journey. Uh, one of my sisters is quadriplegic and has the mental capacity of a three-month-old. Um, and Night to Shine would be a place for her because what Night to Shine is, um, and I again, try not to use my, uh, my job to show the video, but I would encourage each and every person to go to resonateTexas, R E S O N A T E, texas.org. Um, there's a quick video right there, um, that talks about Night to Shine. It is done in conjunction with the Tim Tebow Foundation, uh, as well as a few other foundations. It's the Saturday before Valentine's Day. So this year it's going to be Friday, February 7th at College of the Mainland. Um, I've worked with, um, uh, Success on the Spectrum, which is a new school that just opened up in conjunction with, uh, HCA Mainland, or formerly Mainland, Mainland Hospital. Uh, and this year at the College of the Mainland Conference Center, we will yet again have our Night to Shine, which again is a prom for those with physical disabilities or mental disabilities or both. Um, specifically for them to have, uh, a place to be VIPs. They are all crowned king and queen, uh, of prom. And, and on top of that, we, and honestly, from seeing my father, who is probably the second meanest person I've ever met in my entire life, um, turned into a pulp, uh, a pile of mush, uh, taking care of my sister for 30 years when she probably shouldn't have lived past two. With that, um, is really a call for volunteers. If anybody could come in that Friday to be a friend, to cheer on all of these, uh, people. But in importance, uh, I have a room specifically for parents and caregivers to rest and just be people. And that's from my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. Mrs. Kimberly Kriegel Edwards. Hello, Ms. Edwards. Welcome. Name and address for the record.
Lower Verondo in Lamarck.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm coming here tonight to, uh, request you all to understand that I have a large old pine tree that sits behind my fence line at my house, about a few inches behind the fence. It's even upheaving some of the fence. It looks like this. This is my garage in front of it. In Barrel, my next door neighbor had one of these uprooted. Go through his fence and crash through his garage. Mine's bigger, taller. And if it crashes through my garage, it's taking everything, plus a part of my house. I started this back in late September. Giving everyone time after Barrel to get things taken out uh, and trees lifted. I first talked to Mr. Campion, who's aware of the situation, aware of the tree. He directed me to, uh, the city manager's office at the time, Michaela, who helped me. I went through Public Works, Jose Hernandez. I went through, uh, no, Public Works was Amanda Hobbie. Uh, code enforcement was Jose Hernandez, Chief Merriman. They all came out. Um, I think everyone's pretty aware of this tree, specifically because of a neighbor that lives on the cul-de-sac behind me. The cul-de-sac behind me is called Pine Circle. There are only three houses on it. None of them are on the side where my house is. It backs up to a curb. From back in September all the way through December, I was told. I pay taxes curb to curb. I own curb to curb. You can take the tree out. Everyone was of the consensus. It was indeed, it was deemed an imminent threat to my home and my family, which of course I value. I offered to take it out, to pay for it. I have not asked the city for anything today. But Mr. Ellison shared with me that I was not going to be allowed to cut the tree out, only to take the branches that go across. That's not going to be enough. The tree has to come down to below 20 feet. Because if it falls, it's 27 feet behind my garage. It is well over, uh, 80, 90 feet in height. It will completely go to the front if it goes that way. The only other two homes it could possibly fall upon would be my next door neighbor who already had the damage from the tree that uprooted and the root is still behind his fence or my other neighbor's garage on the other side. The three homes in Pine Circle, they won't be at all at risk. The only possibility is that it would fall across their road and have to be taken out. I have not asked the city for any money. I have offered to pay for it. I don't care who owns the dirt that that tree stands in. I want to pay to have the tree removed. And I am appealing to you all to change the decision. I believe Mr. Neville looked at that, um, based on the city. I don't know what questions were asked or what was presented, but I'm appealing to you all to please allow me the opportunity to remove this tree so that I can have you sleep in peace.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley Winkleman. Welcome, Ms. Haley. Name and address for the record.
Lamarck. So, um, I had originally written a different speech, um, and I will be back at the meeting in the morning to present that to y'all to address the concerns with the antics that I've seen recently. But these new recent executive orders seem to have emboldened a specific subset of society with hateful hearts. So I am going to go ahead and take my time today to make it very clear that racism will no longer be tolerated in Lamarck. This isn't a Republican or a Democrat issue. It's the people and their hearts. That's the issue. If anyone else ever finds themselves in a similar predicament within their city, I hope they know that they do have the freedom to come up here and stand here and say what I'm about to say. When resistant, or when racism rears its ugly head, resistance is not only required, but it becomes our duty. It needs to go back into the place it should have never left, which was the intrusive thought that you never had, that you shouldn't have had in the first place. If you find yourself in a position to stand up against these people, great. But if not, I encourage you to take a breath before interacting with your other neighbors. These situations invoke high levels of emotions. And everyone involved, myself included, has spoken to our peers and our neighbors in using tones and language that were just quite frankly inappropriate. We are all better than this. Um, so this is going to be, go ahead and be my public announcement for the next election for District C. I haven't forgotten that something is funny with our money. And I intend to follow that wherever it leads. I have an MBA, plenty of time, and I love a good spreadsheet. I'm engaged to an amazing man. I was a teen mom who managed to put herself through school. And while I have taken, partaken in personal recreational marijuana use at various phases of my life, I have never been in more trouble than a traffic ticket. I've been married once. That ended in divorce in two and a half years. Um, I've heard of others being intimidated and scared of the bullying and slander. Everyone is on notice. No one has freedom of speech with my name until I am elected to this council.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Winkleman. Council, we're now moving to item six, old business. Items presented, uh, to council for discussion and possible action. We have one. Uh, and that is six, one wastewater treatment plant project update. I see Shannon, uh, is, is Adura with you or are you?
They're actually on Zoom. Rick Garcia, Rick Garcia was, uh, with our, Adura is on Zoom right now.
Okay, very good. Rick, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Very good.
Yes, sir. I can hear you clearly.
Thank you. Are you Shannon leading this, uh, update or?
Uh, Rick is.
Rick is. Rick, you have the, you have the floor, Rick.
Yes, sir. Good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. Uh, we're just wanting to update you to let you know that, uh, we are still working on the, on the completion of the plans for, uh, for the SPR system, which will probably be completed by the end of February. And we are hoping to, uh, have a workshop with the council for discussion, uh, in the next meeting in March. And then with that being said, then if everything goes well. And then with that being said, then if everything goes well, we should be going for approval for bids and advertisements at the meeting in April. And hopefully a ward in June, once everything goes through. And then we'll that'll leave us about a year and a half in construction, which will meet our deadline of uh end of December of twenty twenty seven. So uh Shannon, do you have anything else? I know that our our the most important thing to do is uh to get this bid out as soon as possible. So we can meet our deadline of construction by the end of uh December twenty twenty seven.
The uh the only thing I would add is we are work uh have in conversation with uh Josh Pritchett um on setting up a workshop. I know the council meeting in November. That was a major concern. So we are uh having that right now and the next step is for him or whoever. And Trump City Manager will be to get with y'all and set that up with all of us together, one room. So we're all on the same page when we bring this up again. That's where we're at there, yes, sir.
Yeah. One of the things that that we talked about. I'm sorry, Rick. Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, no, no. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh uh all I was gonna add was I remember the 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 discussion. Apparently there are three different designs. Uh for this one wastewater treatment plant uh and and the only the only uh thing that 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 that. I believed uh would be beneficial to the community in this discussion would be that all three designs receive. Uh bids because we were told that.
There's. There's only been two designs, sir.
There 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 are two that you've submitted to us, correct? And I'm here. Three total.
No, sir. We've only submitted. We've only we've only submitted one.
Right, we if I remember correctly, we need to redesign the one because it was a cheaper option. That could be done or we believe there was a cheaper option.
Absolutely.
Is that what?
Yes, we we are we are concentrating on one right now. It's the SPR system. Because of the monies that are available, it limits us to the size of it and the SPR system reduces the footprint. Uh uh to try to keep us within that budget. That footprint is reduced by about twenty percent. And just on on the GOPers alone, if we go with a bigger footprint, that money is is it's going to be exhausted to where we won't. Be able to afford it. So we are concentrating right now on one SPR system, but we can further discuss this. Uh discuss this on I in at the workshop so we can explain more in 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 depth.
Rick.
Yes, sir.
The people of Lamarck decide what's right for the people of Lamarck. Uh and what I am suggesting you, what this council is suggesting to you is however many designs there are, the council has already directed. This the current what the previous administration and acting uh director uh manager, excuse me. We have already directed the administration to receive bids for however many designs there were. Because it is our credibility on the line and we can't, we won't, I won't. I'm one vote. I'm one vote. I won't personally vote for anything that was changed midstream, even if it was an attempt to save money. Because the people of Lamarck need the full picture. If it wasn't, if it was an attempt attempt to save money, that's fine. Bid all the projects and let us see how they come in and then we can see that you all attempted to save money. That that's all I'm saying.
We will bring everything that we have to, we will bring everything that we have to to the to the uh workshop so we can all uh discuss that. Uh at the workshop. How does that sound, sir?
I appreciate that again and this council will take take those designs. We know that there's more than one. And and we'll have whoever the manager is uh uh put those designs, all of them, if they're fifteen, if they're five, if there's a half of a design. We'll have them bid those bid that design or those designs out. Uh and then the council will be able to communicate with our constituency and together we will decide. How we want to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
We we will, we will uh bring that to you guys on the in the in the March. Well, we'll finish up the SPR system by the end of uh February.
Thank you. Council, do we have any other questions for uh Adura or for Shannon? Thank you. Item seven, new business. Items presented to council for discussion and possible action, seven, one ordinance number letter O dash two zero two five. Dash zero 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 two approving the updates to the twenty twenty four building uh and fire codes for the city of Lamarck. Uh this is the first reading. Uh I believe this is an update, Gus.
Yes, Mayor, and just um on the specifics of the update, I will defer to Chief Mayorman. And uh your new developmental services director, uh Jason Ellison. Um but what was included with the backup is not the ordinance. That's why we have distributed the what is the ordinance to you all um at your seats.
Council, do we have any questions for uh Chief Mayorman or uh who else did you say?
Mr. Ellison. Mr. Mr. Ellison and and.
Mr. Ellison, all right.
To be fair to Mr. Ellison, he is new. I I think he's reviewed it um and he's okay with it. But it was put together with uh Chief Mayor.
Mayorman can.
Yeah, and yes.
Very good. Thank you. Council, do we have any questions for uh Chief Mayorman?
Yes, so.
Very good. Chief Mayorman, would you approach? I hear Mr. Ross and then I hear Mr. Campion.
Mr. Ellison also.
Mr. Ellison, Mr. Ellison, may you approach? Very good. Mr. Ross.
So uh as I'm looking at this item agenda here, are we going to swap all of our existing codes? Over to the twenty twenty four international building codes. Uh from the twenty eighteen is what we're currently at.
What the ordinance says. So yes, the majority of them are all. So the way the International Code Council does their updates is they do. They're on a three-year cycle um for us in order for us to maintain our ISO rating and our. What's the other one? There's another one on the building side. We have to maintain, we have to be, we have to be within two code sets. So we. We try to stay within one or two code sets of it. The with the exception, you'll have to forgive me, I believe the electrical code is not a twenty four. But we're going to the most current version of it.
Twenty twenty.
Um we're basically going to the most current version of all of the code sets that are available. Um and I believe the electrical code is not twenty twenty four. It is.
Twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three because they're on a different rotation. Um I will also say that we have, if you read through it, we've added a few amendments on the on the fireside just to help with some of the new energy storage facilities. That we have and electric vehicle charging stations where um they make a Knox box emergency shut off. That we're going to require the charging stations to have so that we can shut the power to them should uh a car be on fire in front of that. And as well as some of the. We're adding blue strobes to the FDC so that if a building has a sprinkler system, the the blue strobe will be going off when the water comes. So that the firemen can find it sooner.
Yeah, but somebody just said one thing. Uh Gus is correct. I'm I'm coming in late in the in this process and Chief's done a great job putting all this stuff together. And one of the first things I noticed coming in was we had just gone through. Um what's called the building code effective grading assessment. And in that process. They they visit the city, they sit down with the building department and they ask us a lot of questions. They interview us. They want to see, okay, how's your? How's your organization? How's your structure? What's your current building codes you've adopted? What's your certifications for your staff, their qualifications? All that comes into play. And the first thing I noticed was, okay, we're on the two thousand eighteen code. So if we stay there, that's really going to affect our ISO rating and Chief has done a fantastic job. That's currently a two. If we did not update these codes to the twenty four cycle, we would probably drop down dramatically. That's how important adopting current codes.
And and when we when we had our ISO re-rating a few years back, we had just adopted the most current code. So um in order for us to maintain our ISO two rating, which we get reevaluated every five to seven years based on their their cycle. Uh if we're not in the most current code, we do lose points on our on our uh on our rating for that.
And if I just jump in real quick. This, the letter that they had sent us was six months ago. So we are behind they all really bad right now. He reached out to us recently and said, okay, what where are we going to go with this thing? But they're ready to rate us now. If they rate us now on the eighteen.
Right.
Pretty good.
Not not our ISO rating, the um your.
Right. It could it could play a major factor in that.
Mr. Ellison, but but gangs, let me let me just ask this question because I'm I need clarity. Who who sent correspondence six months ago? There is.
Like a major factor into our in insurance rates for our citizens. Could have a major impact in.
And who did you you said Veris contacted your office? So so the developmental services office. Okay, that I just wanted clarity. Mr. Ross, I'm sorry.
I I just want to make sure that I go and get the the appropriate new building standards and stuff. Because I have twenty eighteen home. I use that every time I go fight the ceiling height of my attic for my my property taxes.
There's there's not a whole lot of changes that that typically go in with the code changes and the major ones, you know, like. There was one year, I think it was, was it was it twelve or fifteen where they said, okay, we want all residential houses to have uh sprinklers.
From the twelve to fifty.
The state jumped in and said, okay, we're not. So any kind of major changes like that, they've already taken a little.
Now, I just um I plan on trying to make this trip in March and I was going to use the the building codes on. Educating them of their for property tax purposes that just because somebody has put us a nice ceiling and and. Put an air duct inside their attic doesn't make it a living space because the international building code says the ceiling height. Must be seven foot, six inches and it's only six foot up there. It's a climate controlled storage area.
That's probably something that hasn't changed in the residential code.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Campion.
First, in the uh in the recitals, Gus. I think it would be helpful to reference for the benefit of future councils for all of us. This bo- both the the on the far side, the what was it? The IS?
ISO.
ISO and on the building side, the the Vesco or Vespoe, what was the group you said?
Veris.
Veris.
And somewhere in the recitals. Identify them. That we're nowhere we're bringing this up to meet those particular standards is required by. ISO and Vespoe. Uh that's number one, I think, just to talk about international. Code uh second. The uh. The. The the signage that's required, that's on the ISO side, I assume, or is that on the building side? That this the signage that a business must must uh. Is sure my authorized designation fire lanes on the property and to direct the owner of the property. To cause the signs to be painted or stenciled, fire lane notes, parking tollway. Uh what's who's is that the fireside or is that both?
It's primarily in the fire code.
That's in the fire code. Traditionally, it's been the obligation of the of the commercial property owner. Or the school district to 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 pay those charges.
Correct. And that's part of keeping your, so the fire lanes, the keeping the fire lanes um maintained is part of your. Your annual occupancy permit that you you receive through the city.
And um. The what what I didn't see, just to follow up on that, is. How is this applicable, these standards applicable to churches? And we talked about, we talked about properties and buildings with occupancies of less than. I think one was forty nine and then there was another one of less than five, but uh but I didn't have any. There was nothing specifically referencing or I couldn't see where churches would fall into. These categories that were listed, right? Um I'm I'm going over the categories here. We talked about. Uh apartments and uh but but. Churches were not mentioned at all. Where do they are they?
Churches generally fall under what's considered an assembly. And that's how it's classified. It's not classified as a it it's not classified in either the building code or the fire code as a church. Much like schools are classified as educational facilities, churches are classified as assemblies. Or a place of worship.
Assemblies, did you say assemblies? The uh. And the obligations are therefore also incumbent upon them to to follow these standards. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Um however, the. The. The codes that that and that's why we have to keep. So just because we're upping to the twenty four. We still have to keep a copy of the eighteen and older codes because some buildings, we it's not fair for us to, like you. Say you've had a business that's been in business for twenty years.
Grandfather provision.
Right. Well, as long as they maintain their occupancy and they maintain the that code. Um unless there's any type of change that would trigger a remodel or a. Reevaluation of the code cycle. That's why we keep an old old set of books.
And I'm assuming that in that in that 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 version, it's the the remodel provisions are something like. Less than if less than forty nine percent of the of the of the remodel.
There's 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 other things that go. Yes, that's some of it has to do with structural, some of it has to do with valuation. There are a lot of a lot of things that would trigger. Bringing it up to the current code.
Okay.
But there's nothing that says like if if a business has been in service and as long as it's maintaining the code that it was built to. That's the code that they're held to. We don't, we don't come in and go, all right, you're in the twenty twenty four. It says that anything over three hundred and I'm just going to throw a number. It says anything over three hundred square foot has to be sprinkled. That doesn't mean that your building has to now go go put a sprinkler system in because you were built under a different code that says ten thousand square foot.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
The this requirement that that a Knox box, Knox box is required. It says on all commercial buildings slash properties slash structures gates. But so I if I have a small little across the street, that uh State Farm Insurance Building that's there. That's considered a commercial property?
Correct.
Or does that fall under the exceptions?
So.
I look on the occupancy amount.
It so it's still considered a commercial property and this city has subscribed to the Knox box system since two thousand and three. And I will tell you that putting a Knox box on a building is only saving the citizens money. Because a commercial, if your building is on fire, that commercial door will cost you over a thousand dollars to repair when my guys tear it open. And go put your fire out. If there's a Knox box that costs two hundred dollars on the thing, we will unlock the door. Drop the door open, go put the fire out.
Oh, so I actually thanks for that clarification because for some reason, the language in here as I'm reading it. I felt that that the Knox box was somehow uh associated with uh. The. Solar power.
So we we added, that goes back to the EV electrical charging station in the soul. Knox has created an emergency shut off that uses the same key that all of our Knox boxes use.
Basically, a Knox box is a lock box.
Yes.
That's all. That's what.
That has a. That has an electronic key that is coded just to the fire department in this area. No other fire department and and from any other jurisdiction can come into our jurisdiction and open up your business with a Knox key. In order to get that key out of the the truck, you have to put a pin code in that tells us who took it out. When they took it out, where they took it out at because it's GPS monitored.
But in but in essence, a not a a Knox box is a box attached to the a commercial structure with a key to that commercial structure.
To prevent us from tearing.
There's smoke, fire, uh uh life uh uh safety issues. Uh instead of breaking a door to find that somebody just burned popcorn.
Yes.
Whatever the case may. Or whatever the case may be. Yeah.
I'm glad that, because that, that was some confusion on my part with that.
And, and what you're seeing in there is the, the Knox box system now has a. Shut off for EV charging centers. That's what, so if there is a vehicle charging, an electric vehicle charging station. Which there are four prominently parked right up next to the Time Wise gas station at seventeen sixty-four and two double oh four. There's no shut off on them.
Because it wasn't left. Electric charging station.
Right. There's no shut off. So if a car catches fire, that is an electric vehicle that it catches fire, that is connected to that charging station.
Yeah.
It is right over the gas tanks in the ground.
I see. Yeah, you're right.
So we have no way to shut the power off to those, because those were put in prior to this. They were also put in prior to the development of that.
Technology.
The technology.
Yeah.
Which is also not in the twenty-four fire code, which is why we amended that code to have that in it.
I appreciate the clarification on that, that Knox. Jumping, one fire hydrant shall be required every five hundred feet. For residential development, uses or subdivisions. When applied to public streets or other fire apparatus access roads. One fire hydrant shall be required every three hundred feet for every non, for all non-residential developments. Uses. I, I'm, I'm. So I'm, I'm interested in understanding the rationale, but with a smaller number, uh, uh, feet, three hundred feet. For me, a residential development has more value, I, I guess, because there's more in my area, but. LaMarcus principally a residential community.
Sure.
And, uh.
That, that is along the lines of that, so the, in the fire code already, it says. There are, for residential, you have to have a one fire hydrant every five hundred foot.
Yes.
And in commercial areas, you have to have one every three hundred foot. That, that's just where that goes, and it doesn't. The fire code says commercial area. It says residential or commercial. All we did was change the commercial to be any other non-residential area. Is what we changed.
Non-residential area.
These are commercials really congested.
And then I, I noticed that there's another two hundred and fifty feet. That's for additional fire hydrants as well. I guess when I, when I look at those things, what comes to me is additional costs, right? Are we? And, and I want to be assured that there is this communication that's going on between development and fire. With a potential business owner or a home, uh, uh, really a business. Because somehow they're going to share in the costs, correct?
And, and generally, when a, when a business comes in, they want to have a, what they, what we, what they would consider a pre-development meeting. There's a fire marshal sitting at the table with them, so that they all, they look at all of that and make sure that they all know that that's gonna happen upfront. Much like the dog track has hydrants on it that are technically not the city's hydrants, but we maintain them because if. It's on fire, we gotta hook to them. So we, we make sure that those hydrants will function.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying, Elise.
Absolutely. Very good. Uh, Pierre, are we at a motion or no? I will entertain a motion. There's all, there's only three of us, guy.
I got, I would like to, but I got, so there's some labeling stuff here that I have questions about. So all houses with solar panels, now are y'all gonna make sure they all get the appropriate label? And once this is.
So what we're, what we're trying to do, so on the houses that have solar panels, they tend to have a battery storage in the garage. Um, and this came about, we're asking, we want them to put a sticker on, on. The facility so that we know that there's a battery there, because, um, we had a structured fire over in. Paint and Meadows that had them, and they, even though we killed the power to the facility, to the house, uh, shutting the power off. It was still live and our firemen almost got electrocuted, because we didn't know there was a, there was a battery backup on.
And I, I fully understand that, but are, how are we going to, as this gets codified and signed into ordinance? How are we going to make sure?
What we're going to have to do is, as we see houses that have solar panels, provide them with a. I hate to say permit, because we're not going to charge a fee for the permit, but it's basically information that we're going to put in the system. So that when we go to a house, our, our active CAD nine sys- system will pull up. And let us know that there's a potential battery storage there that we need to make sure we disconnect.
Can we just get stickers for the people that have them already? Please, that would just make it so much easier, I think.
Well, and that's the, the goal is for everybody to have stickers on a garage that says, on the garage or, or on the mailbox.
Or the house, something, I fully understand that. I just wanna, the people that are out there that don't know, or it's a rental house and.
At the, at the simplest form of it, do you remember, uh, Mayor will remember this, but, um. Back in the, the late nineties, early two thousands, you put stickers on the outside of your children's windows, because they were called the top finder stickers. Kind of what we, similar what we want to do with anybody that has a, a backup battery in their house, so that we don't, we don't.
And, and I just, I think it would be easier for us to print up how many. We know, because we have a list of, of names. They had to get full permits to put them in. But they may not be paying attention to the meeting. They don't, they're not reading all the ordinances they come through.
The ones that are already existing, we will visit them with, with stickers.
That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, will you done, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protim, did you still have that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, the motion, yeah. Forgot about that.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any further discussion?
I wanted to say the motion with the.
Yeah, including the recitals about the ISO and the various, and I'll put that in there and bring that to y'all. So that y'all can pass it on second reading. That's not a substantive change.
Do you accept that as a friendly, uh?
I, I accept it with the changes.
Very good. Uh, any further discussion? Here, no, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seven two, resolution number letter, uh, thank you, sirs. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero 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 four. Approval, approving the aerial spraying of mosquitoes by Galveston County mosquito control district as required on a yearly basis. By the Federal Aviation Administration. This is standard renewed every year.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second, right.
You have discussion?
For our, um, acting city manager to get somebody that can. Use the mosquito truck, please.
We just had someone pass. Mr. Kenneth, Mr. Kenneth is unofficially known as the LaMark mosquito man. Uh, and he is, uh, uh, he, he's in a new part of Public Works. He's been with us just shy of a year. Uh, but he, he has successfully passed all of the certifications needed. Uh, we, we put him. It's either in the inside of the mark that's about to come out or the one that just came out. But Mr. Kenneth from Public Works is our new mosquito man. Yes, sir.
So let's, let's, uh, in the past, oh, in the past, uh, publication, let, let's clarify. Um, because we all know what's happening, but the community perhaps does not. This, what we are dealing with tonight is. Just, uh, is the, uh, relationship we have with the health district.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what, what Mr. Ross and Mr. Pritchett were discussing is, in addition to that. Uh, previous council acquired a, uh, piece of equipment. It's basically a mosquito machine.
Yes.
Uh, Lamarck is, uh, having issues with mosquitoes, even with the health district spraying. On a regular basis. And so this is our effort to help control, uh, that, uh, that nuisance for our community members.
And to, for clarification with, uh, that specific machine and how we have done that thus far. It is a versatile machine. It can be put in the back of a pickup truck or, um, a mule. You know, off-road, uh, vehicle that we've used. I, I know that we've tested it several times at Mac McGaffey Highland Bayou Park, because there's plenty of mosquitoes out there. And so, uh, part of, of Mr. Kenneth, uh, getting certified for that is also doing the work. And so Public Works already has a plan, um, for as we head into, uh, getting out of the colder season of LaMarcus. And when we head into the rainy season, the spring, uh, to, to map out and to cover the city. In addition to the county health district as well.
Very good. I would like to add to that, uh, while you all are planning, uh, if we would be able to perhaps. Uh, identify, uh, other certified, uh, not Rashad, doesn't want the job. Let's be clear. We're not even starting that. But other, other certified, uh, folks that we might be able to, if in emergency, if Mr. Kenneth is on vacation or wins the lottery.
Yes, sir. So for that, uh, I believe there's three or four, I'm looking at Shannon, I'm looking for numbers. But there are additional people that already begin to study to take those, uh, three, three. Uh, that have already begun to study to take that certification. It's a bit of a lengthy process. Mr. Kenneth was just the first one, so he gets the mosquito man crown.
So, so let me drill back into what I'm saying. So we still need to find persons that we would be able to call up. And say, we can ten ninety-nine you.
Yes, sir.
But we need you to.
Yes, sir.
You got me? All right. That way it never stops.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, any further, did we get a motion?
We have a motion, but we don't have a vote.
Uh, I'll call, what, are there any further, is there any further discussion? Here, no, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seven three, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero 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 five. Applying for a no match grant, uh, to the office of the governor, uh, state homeland security program. Uh, this is a law enforcement terrorism prevention activities, uh, council. Uh, if there are no questions about this, uh, application, I will entertain a motion. Chief is standing by to answer the question. Now here, so move there. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, no, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seven four, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero 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 six. Applying for another no match grant with the office of the governors. Uh, I guess this SHSP, uh, regular projects, uh, something that needs to be explained by somebody. Uh, what is the SHSP? This is, uh. State Homeland Security? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I will, uh, interview, you have a question?
Is it appropriate for us to, because we have one, two, three, four, five, six?
You want to do them all together?
Yeah, all together. It's all for the police.
I, I don't know, because the attorney has left the room. So how about we?
We have nine of them that.
How about, how about we discuss? How about you, uh, uh, if, if, if you wanted to answer that, chief, you can. I will go and see if I can find the attorney.
I, I could go.
Are you gonna find? Thank you.
There's nine, nine debit grants. Our grant goddess back there, uh, Alice has put us on these. They're all no match. They're all one year, and they're all for a variety of different reasons. And it's something like, you know. Uh, why wouldn't we apply for this? There's no magic required. We need everything that's in here. Each one has got a different purpose. I can go with them real quick, one by one. We'll be, uh.
So, uh, the law enforcement terrorism prevention activities.
Is that?
Program, that's the first one that we just voted on. I agree with it, but I'd just like to inform people what that actual program.
It's, it's essentially, it's, it's for law enforcement to come up with solutions to prevent terrorism. And damage to property from terrorism. And our plan, and of course, it'll be spelled out more specifically, would be to provide training. To somebody in our department that's gonna do this, to prevent terrorism and, and destruction of property. You can't beat that. We need that. You never know. So that's, that's the first one. I'll go one by one, if you would, uh, if you don't mind, sir.
Uh, let's, let's, uh, Gus said we could take them all at once.
Sure.
So here's what we'll do, chief. We'll, we'll have you, if you don't mind, um, stand, uh, in council. Uh, do you have any questions for items, before I read them all, item seven four, I believe? No, we're doing seven four now. Yeah, seven four. Do we have a motion on the floor for seven four? We don't, okay. Item seven four, seven five, seven six, seven seven. Seven eight. Uh, seven nine, seven ten, R seven eleven. Do we have any questions for those? Well, I will read them and, uh, when I'm done reading them, whoever makes the motion has to make the motion. For item seven four through seven eleven. Here we go. Seven four, res- oh, I just did that one. Seven five. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero 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 seven. Applying for a no match grant from the office of the governor, SHSP NPA, National Priority Area Project. Seven six, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero 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 eight. Applying for a no match grant for the office of the governor's grant app, application rifle resistant body armor grant program. Seven seven, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero 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 nine. Applying for no match grant from the office of the governor's bullet resistant shield program. Item seven eight, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero zero one zero. Applying for a no match, uh, office of the governor project safe neighborhood grant. Uh, item seven, what is that? Nine, uh, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero 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 one, zero zero one one. Excuse me. Applying for a no match grant from the office of the governor, state crisis intervention grant program. Item seven ten, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero zero one two. Applying for a no match grant from the office of the governor criminal justice grant program. And finally, item seven eleven, resolution number letter R dash two zero two five dash zero zero one three. Applying for a no match grant for the sexual assault evidence testing grant program. I will entertain a motion to approve item seven four through seven eleven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, no, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you for that, Mr. Ross. You got us through about forty-five minutes sooner than we probably would have made. And the people that have to drive into little old LaMarcus are clapping. Yeah, seven, I'm just teasing. Seven, uh, what is that? Seven, uh, twelve. Contract with Open Gov. Those gentlemen back there look like they know something about that. So we're gonna ask you to start making your way, authorizing the city manager upon the final, final approval of the city attorney to sign. A contract with Open Gov Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-three cent. For the provision of final, uh, excuse me, of financial management software. Are you guys making a presentation? Or are you here to just answer questions? Ah, there's something that says, there you go. Introduce yourselves and then you can start your presentation. Mayor Protim, I have to step out for about thirty seconds.
Good evening, councilor mayor, uh, Ray Kirkpatrick, regional counter executive here at Open Gov, uh, responsible for the state of Texas.
And my name is Christine. I'm our director of sales for the county. So I work with Bray and team across about fifteen states in total. Working closely on the LaMarcus projects with the team here.
First of all, thank you for the time tonight. One of the things that, we can go to the next, uh, page here. Um, so within the RFP that was released back in, um, the November timeframe. Uh, within the Open Gov portfolio, you guys are already using our, uh, predecessor, which was called SCW. Um, and so SCW was an on-prem platform that Open Gov actually migrated to the cloud infrastructure. So completely cloud, um, completely a hundred percent in the cloud. With that, um, that financial package actually includes our entire ERP software. Which, uh, encompasses budget and planning, um, procurement, opening up financials, asset management. And our permitting and licensing software. So, um, can move to the next page here. Um, so we talked about, uh, we're completely in the cloud and with that cloud infrastructure. Uh, the city employees have the ability to access that data regardless of where they are. Um, as long as they have access to the internet and are using a web browser, um, that is important, obviously, given the fact. Uh, being a Texan, uh, but more importantly, spending my freshman year of college at the University of Houston, um, in two thousand and five. Understand that sometimes the business of the city has to continue, even when, uh, you can't physically be in the building. So, uh, whether that is, uh, Mr. Pritchett or Ms. Turner or someone from her staff. Uh, being able to access things after hours, or more importantly, uh, when they can't access the building is important. So, uh, with our cloud focused infrastructure, we're able to accomplish that. So. Now, uh, this is just a small list of our Texas customers, uh, across the, um, across the United States. Uh, we work with thousands of organizations, but we only work with public sector entities. So cities, counties, municipalities, uh, and special districts within that. So we can move forward two slides if we can. Um, this is included within the Open Gov financial platform, so everything that the staff uses today. So everything that the staff uses today, um, there is an RFP obviously out for the payroll and HR components. Um, so we would not be complying with that, but then utility billing as well as budget and planning would be included in this proposal. You can click to the next one. We bring this up because we've seen a, over, uh, on average, we've seen our customers spend eighty percent less time on reporting because of the automated reporting aspects that are built inside of this system with our reporting and transparency. Um, I know that is something that is important to the citizens. Um, I know that is something that was really important even going back, um, to the budget conversations, uh, back in July and August, uh, that was brought up by council. And so, uh, the ability of, you know, the usage of the, the previous software that was on-prem, uh, being frustrating and not being able to tell a story, uh, was something that was called out in those budget meetings. And so, uh, we're able to do those things, more importantly, uh, whether it be FOIA requests and even the time spent on budget. The staff is having to start that budget process earlier, uh, than normal. So by moving to a cloud-based infrastructure, and I believe, uh, Mayor Bell, you asked for a zero budget, uh, during the last council, being able to operate with that and do that efficiently at that same time. Um, with included in this is our permitting and licensing software as well. So there will be a public portal that individuals can go on, pay there, uh, or actually start their processes for, uh, their individual permits. More importantly, uh, when things get to the desk of Mr. Ellison, uh, congratulations, uh, for your new role here. Um, but as they get to Mr. Ellison, um, and his staff, you're, they're able to, uh, use our, you know, automatic language to understand certain permits go to certain places. And whether it's internal within the city of Lamarck or any outside, uh, parties that you guys leverage, the ability to, uh, have that in-app collaboration where the city has full control over everything that's happening inside of that with different structure fees, uh, that have been called out previously. And, uh, even more importantly, um, providing that documentation and the pro- paying for all of this going back into the, uh, financial ledger at the same time without leaving the system.
But.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, if I could add to that, we also comprise code enforcement in that solution. So that was something we've heard a few times here tonight from citizen comments. In addition to that, uh, we have a communication portal. So when you look at solar permits, we're able to pull that list and automatically reach out to those, uh, those citizens as well.
Inside of permits and, uh, permitting and licensing with the, with the software, obviously there are individuals who want to know where their information is, where they are in the process. Individuals and more importantly, the citizens have the ability to at any point log in and see where they stand in the process, uh, from start to finish. And that, move forward to, um, within asset management, I know that this is a big proponent and a big, uh, uh, value driver that we saw within this at the city level. So, um, this is a brief overview of what's inco- uh, what's included with our Cartograph Enterprise Asset Management. But more importantly, as we go to that next slide, you'll see across asset management within our portfolio, we're able to track these particular activities that you see on the screen. Um, I'll call out, um, under infrastructure planning, I'll go right to left. Obviously FEMA and the reporting and the aspects, uh, involved in that, the city staff being able to understand what needs to go back to FEMA and being able to get those back in a timely fashion comes into play there. Uh, whether it comes into resources, understanding, you know, talk about changing of signs, talk about changing of things that people have mentioned within the media, uh, within, uh, the council meetings. You're able to recognize those and understand how many of those you need on hand to make sure you have proper, uh, properly staff, um, or not even proper materials for that. Uh, the work that's involved, being able to leverage a mobile app to do these things. So the functionality, not just to, uh, move paper from one office to the next, or even in a, a vehicle, being able for the individuals in the field to see this work going on in real time. Um, E T M, uh, who I know presented a couple of, uh, council meetings ago. Um, you know, we have the ability with partners like that to understand everything above the ground and below the ground, whether it be roads, whether it be pipes, and provide you, uh, predictive analysis to understand when things need to be changed and when times, uh, you know, you need to focus on A's, those as you go through your capital improvement projects.
If I could add to that, when I looked at, you know, the domains that we cover here, um, there's a lot of overlap to things we've heard over the past few councilments. It's obviously the street projects and the street data that adjusts, you know, but yeah, we can bring that into the system, use that to understand where our highest condition streets are, what do we need to, uh, do against them? We can track the work we're doing against them, cost of that. Uh, when we look at, uh, code enforcement, again, permitting and licensing beats directly this platform as well. So if, you know, without finding a code issue, they, and they support the time we took into this, this property, it's now time to see and mitigate that. We can pass that word for word directly over to asset management. We can track the time it took to mitigate that. And then use that to drive that property. So there's a lot of overlap across these systems as well. Uh, but big picture, when we look at, you know, talking about ten miles of pipeline that needs inspection, repairs, replacements, losing fifty percent of your water into the ground. You know, the street projects, we were hearing to several of them presented. We heard some of the citizen comments around it. Uh, the bike and sidewalk conversations, all of those things, you know, follow right into here. When you're talking about how, you know, their steward died and it's, you know, this is something that can, has been picked down the road many, many, many times before. We hear, um, citizens and employees speak about when we were worried about it at a public purse level. This is a system that can really help to consolidate a lot of those costs, understand where your money is going, where it is best spent, and where maybe we need to repair, what replace or adjust. Our policy will apply. Uh, so this is, I like to say this is one of my favorites.
And obviously, um, we can move forward, uh, to here. Uh, we're gonna integrate with the three, one, one system with ComK, uh, to provide that, uh, connection point. This is all gonna be integrated, um, for internal workflows to help with that piece. But as we move to the next piece, um, reporting and transparency, um, that's the next one. Reporting and transparency is extremely, uh, valuable. It's extremely huge to us here at Open Gov. And so what we've done within the, within the platform of our ERP system, um, this is a replica of what, this is not your budget module, uh, but this is what it could look like. Um, so you have a couple of different things here, not just the, uh, ability to look at expenditures versus revenues to provide, uh, some, a summary there. But if you'll go to the next one, our ability to, to take in things like KPIs, uh, those key performance initiatives and, and understand where those things sit within the city. So not just those bar graphs, not just a table, uh, but then one more, if you will. Um, but then also to, uh, understanding from things like taking data from fire rescue calls. How many calls have, uh, Chief Paramon and, or Merriman, not Paramon, uh, how many calls Chief Merriman and his staff have been on? Um, how many inspections have been done? Understanding these things, this data is, is on the web, publicly accessible. Um, and your citizens can go and see these things in real time, um, and look for themselves. That eliminates them having to come into staff and ask questions. More importantly, um, the public trans- the public transparency is just that. It's public and it allows you to do that, um, in real time, whether they are, um, you know, coming up here, uh, tonight, or whether they want to look at it at three o'clock in the morning, uh, they have that ability to do so. So. Um, the last piece here is just kind of from a timeline perspective, um, within this, these are, um, extensive projects. And what we like to do is we like to tailor our approach, A, to understand what's important, but more importantly, we don't want to do everything at one time because we want to make sure that it's done, uh, with, with excellence. And so, uh, the goal would be to move the financial system into the, uh, to the cloud first. That is the base of your software. Uh, that is the base of everything that will feed into the system. Um, and so we moved that into the cloud, uh, first, uh, from the on-prem infrastructure with S C W. At the same time, uh, you get the ability to work with procurement as well. So, uh, didn't actually talk about that piece, but, um, the ability to not only, um, start projects, to go out for, um, taking your RFP process from on paper, um, and via email to actually a system where you can, um, create that judgment process internally or the evaluation process internally. Um, and then more importantly, um, understanding how other people have went out for similar projects, other cities, other counties, and taking their repli- you know, taking their data and replicate it within the city of Lamarck, um, to your, to your, uh, needs there. Then the, um, last piece would be permitting. And then from permitting, we would actually do the asset management and utility billing, um, process. Um, but the budget and planning would go after the financial system is completed. So.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions?
Yes.
All right, let's, uh, Vinnie. Let's go with ten, ten to start and see how far we get.
So, uh, I love all the flashy and all, it's all gonna be open to everybody and everything. How are utility billing? How small of an increment of water can I, can I bill somebody for?
Your current processes for which you, um, do your water billing today, those would be in the same process that they are today. So.
Right now I bill at a thousand gallons minimum. Is there any way to lower that so that the houses that are an, an empty nest with one person in it and maybe a dog and a cat that only uses four or five hundred gallons of water, not have to pay up to a thousand gallons of water? That way, when somebody who is on a fixed income is not paying that amount.
Yeah. No, completely understand you, Councilman Ross. Uh, one of the things I would say is that's something that would be evaluated internally by the city. Uh, from a software perspective, we're handling the software, but how you choose to, um, you know, automate or control the rates and things, that's gonna be totally at the city of Lamarck's discretion.
Water will, will stay on the utility billing side. Is there something in there that can have a built-in alert that not only utility billing will get an alert saying, hey, abnormal water usage here, but the resident can say, we'll get the alert at the same time. So they know to go check their toilets, their sinks. They're, they're outside to see if there's a swamp forming in their backyard because of a water leak.
Yes, sir. Um, understanding that that was something that was of importance, um, when, um, you know, first of all, anytime my water bill goes crazy, like, I, I get it. So clearly understand that. Um, that is something that Ms. Turner, um, and her staff relate to us. And they, if I'm correct, they're going to select a actual party that's going to be doing that piece of it to the specifications that, um, the utility billing team, uh, Venetia and, uh, Venetia Henderson and Ms. Turner have evaluated, uh, separately from this.
So now, last bit, this is more for you, acting city manager. But when I look at the ARPA funds that we had expended for this, and I did, did the math here for the utility water usage client software and the HR finance, U B, utility billing admin software combined is five hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, this contract says seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-three cents. Where is the extra one hundred and eighty-four dollars?
It's a separate item, sir. It's at the top of that list. And that seven hundred and twenty-one from ARPA is, uh, just again, for point of information, is not just what we pay for software usage, but it is also the implementation schedule that was the last slide that we talked about. It's covering Open Gov's, um, staff for that implementation for not only financials, procurement and all of that as a whole, when it relates to this. So what that cost is, is it covers all the implementation and software usage after that. The software usage or the amount that you see on, uh, seven, twelve for tonight, that contract with Open Gov, that seven twenty-one, that will go down. Chris, we talked about it, it was right at two fifty, two seventy?
So two hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and one dollars.
Thank you.
Eight cents.
I knew they would be on top of it. They have, and every single one of the phone calls and Zoom calls, I've talked to these gentlemen more than my children here lately. So. Uh, but yes, so what that, what that cost is all of the cost that accrues for us to implement, change over all of our current systems from S T W, uh, and the other softwares that we use into this one cloud-based that would cover all of the city that would communicate to each other, um, for the next, well, twelve months or so, uh, as we implement until January tw- twenty twenty-six.
Um, Mr. Pritchett, if I could add one thing, um, or a couple of things here. So, um, we're not doing this implementation remotely. Our staff will be on-site.
Absolutely.
Uh, to be a part of, you know, to be a part of this change that, uh, will be happening here. Um, one of your, um, local county resident, uh, county, I guess constituents, uh, is uh, at Dickinson County Water District, uh, is a customer of ours. Dickinson County, uh, was a second customer in Open or S T W history. Um, and they moved over to Open Gov, uh, June of last year. And so they started that process of implement, implement, implementation. And one of the things that they said from our team, uh, was that they appreciated our ability to work with them at their speed as opposed to really trying to push things at the level or the, or the rate that others had, had asked them to. So.
That's my job.
Yeah, that's your, that's your job internally. Yes, absolutely. Um, uh, but then the, you know, the, the other piece of this is, is that, um, you know, with, within that, you know, you guys have been on S T W for, uh, over twenty years. And so, um, this is something that as you think about, uh, the topics that have been covered tonight as well as in other meetings. Um, these are the type of things that will help you not only track, uh, but then also have visibility, um, into the things that you want, uh, for the eighteen thousand citizens. And more importantly, um, it aligns to our, our mission at the end of the day, which is to, um, assist our customers and operate more efficiently, strengthening, uh, public trust and adapting to the change that's ever occurred.
And part of that, that I would just add, and it's, you know, where I've enjoyed all of our time together. This is more of a point of information just for the city of Mar- Lamarck rather than, uh, a cell for Open Gov. But just so that everyone is aware, S T W is becoming obsolete. That is our current software that we use. Uh, it's the current software that we have to use on-site. It is not a cloud-based software. So, um, when I ran pu- payroll last week, I had in the midst of winter storm Enzo, have to, after, I thought we were already done for the day, Chief Merriman, come all the way back up here to make sure that payroll was run because of how the software works, you have to be on-site. And so, uh, again, part of the reason why we've looked at these options is not only because of the software becoming obsolete, but God forbid, if there's pandemic or there's a winter storm or hurricane, we can still run financial reports. We can still make sure our bank recs and payroll and everything is done in a timely manner.
And we, me fixing to be a cit- just a citizen again, and everybody that sits up here, we all appreciate that. But what we really want to know is the checkbook got an extra one hundred and eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollars in.
Well, and I'll have to look at the list, but the, there were a couple of different bids that were included in ARPA. HR, financials, and all of the above. So when we're looking at, at this particular piece, it doesn't encompass all of those. It's a, it's a different line item.
Yes. I just want to make sure that it gets out on record to everybody that's watching and listening.
And I also would like to point out, again, staff did their, their due diligence when it came to looking not only at, at this option, but several other options as well. And, uh, I'm, I'm pleased to also add that this software would also allow our finance team to do, dare I say forensic audits of, of our own systems. Because of the way that the software is built, there is a plethora of reports that not only you have the ability to customize, but through the implementation process, their staff work with our finance staff in order to make sure, uh, that they fully understand all of the reports needing to be run so that we can hone in on all of the data after it is transferred.
And this is my last question that I've been asked about all of this. As we implement everything to the cloud, how much financial data might we lose going into that transfer?
No, great question. You actually will still have access to your S T W software. I will, you know, sit like, like a server would. It sits on-prem still. Uh, the data will not move to the cloud with it. So there'll be, uh, two separate dates. There'll be a kind of an initial process where things move to the cloud. And then there'll be a validation section and then it'll be a, a mass, uh, move everything to the cloud. Um, so it'll be two separate times when that, when that process occurs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's all I got.
Yeah.
You have two quick ones?
Yes.
All right, Vinnie, give us, give us five more.
The, uh,
the tracker, is that the three, one, one now? Is that what you're referring to?
Tom K.
Sorry?
Tom K, the three, one, one.
Comgate, Comgate.
It's called Tom K.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Is that the, the tracker that we call? That we call the tracker?
Yes, sir, it is. Yeah, request tracker.
This is a different system, but it could. We've looked at everything you have within Tracker, and I think that kind of comprises some permitting elements, some code elements, some. Maybe some asset management elements and then citizen request elements. Those between Tom Kate. Um, asset management, permitting licensing, we can consolidate all those. So there's a system that could be replaced.
No, just for consistency, just utilize same terminology, you know?
You can call it whatever you like on the website.
We're used to this, this is what.
Our partner back there.
So if you're doing a better fine question, and this is follow-up, utility bill, that is a different module. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, that you were, that, that permits us to, to personalize. The, the blockages that we want or the, the alerts that we get on our water usage, correct, Ms. Turner?
That is correct.
That's separate, that's not you got.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Uh, and one other, one of the, the. You, you listed assets as one of your categories. What I didn't see there is also surplus assets. Disposition of surplus assets or surplus sales. That's another category that. Yes, uh, I wanna make sure that we're accounting for not only our assets, but how we move them or get them off the books as well too.
Yes, sir. So that, that would actually happen under our, if you're more or less referring to like the depreciation of funds and, or not depreciation, but depreciation of assets. And in and out, that would be under the fixed assets model and financials uh, within the financial platform, but then there's also a piece to do that. Um, in the Cartograph uh, Asset Management with the inventory surplus as well.
So if you were to sell off surplus inventory or surplus asset, we can track when that happened. How much that was and keep a record of it in the asset management system as well. Playing the asset with taking out of life and be a well.
Thank you.
So, hold on.
Go ahead, Miss Chance.
One, one of the biggest things that, that I've seen with um, our previous software. Is that it didn't bring everything together and it was so confusing. And so. I've learned things I know we've explored when I first got elected was our processes. And I think this is finally an answer to that because um, we were so very more, so, so very archaic. So I wanna make sure that when we. That when you come, cause you argue that this is almost a million dollars, right? So of taxpayer money. Um, that they, that we'll definitely have enough training that we can get on board of commissioners as well, um, at least the, the head of those. To, to know how to use it, because I know in the past, and, and Joe, you can relate to this anytime we've upgraded to something different, it's been an outcry. From the residents like, oh my God, you know, even I know this is, this is an internal method, right, for our staff. But it sounds like you also have some mechanisms that are um. Uh, that our residents maybe can have access to. So I just wanna make sure that. In your uh, system that you, that we have enough training available to make sure that we become. Uh, cause I know our finance. Department probably turn over heels, right? Cause it's gonna make their work a lot easier because we've had some issues with budget books. This software can produce a budget book, yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Say it again, say it loud.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that has been such an issue, right? And so, and that was one of the things that, that, that I had a concern with. It shouldn't be that hard when you have good software, cause all it should do is pull from your different departments. But because we have a, we had a, we have archaic software, it was, it's, it's been very difficult, so. This will, will provide all of that. So when we want a budget book, we'll be, this software, we, we'll be able to provide that.
Absolutely. And you can roll over the same format as you had the prior year, the next fiscal year, update the dates, we're pulling that direct data from the system. We have an AI tool to help you with the narrative and generation of the summary.
Now, that's what you didn't mention.
So it can speed it up uh, as well. But in addition to that, you can maintain all those historicals for citizens, it's the website. But, you know, navigation, very simple. Uh, when you speak to training uh, across every single one of those modules that we touched on, we will have administrative level training. And end user training as well as for any key users, we'll invite them to be part of the deployment. We want to, you know, bring your processes in. Uh, gentleman like, you know, Tyrone's about thirty years here, we want his input on asset management. If kind of times all the words, you know, where he's been. We wanna know it's working well and bring that in. Uh, so we'll have end user and admin level training. You'll have a dedicated customer success manager, so that's a name part of our open job. You have, you have one person to call and you need. They'll grab our resources, come to you to help support. We also have OpenGov University, which is an online repository of training tools, resources. Webinars constantly updated, so variety of methods that we can help support on the training and on the customer success side of the house.
And since Ms. Turner and I, I mean, we've kinda, I think the things that we get most excited about are the things that. Aren't always seen, right? It's the, it's the processes like you talk about to, to implement in the shadows in order to, to make sure that. It runs smoother. And over the last, God knows how many Zoom calls and, and all the above. Uh, one of the things that we talked about and just how we formulate that, and he talked about OpenGov. Uh, university i- is implementing those as, as either customized. Videos from our communication departments that will include that, um, obviously with their permission, but. We want to, with lack of a better word, be able to spoon feed this to anybody, whether they are coming on to a board of commission. Whether they are replacing a previous councilperson, whether uh, you know, a new department head or anybody, Mr. Ellison just now joining the team. He would be able to go in and look at the library and be up to speed in record amount of time. And so that's, that's a big part of, uh, of what we've talked about. Ms. Gancy, I think you know a little bit better than most, how, how much we have focused on. Trying to come out of the stone age when it comes to processes. And so. With that, it's, it's also the updating of, of the products that we use as well, so.
We also have a commitment to ongoing updates as well with our software and enhancements and feature changes, so. Um, you know, as an example, we do user groups for all of our software in our customers' backyard where other cities come in and. And we get people connected to each other because they're gonna learn from each other more than they're gonna learn from us. And so those are the type of things that we do. Not just implement the software and show you how to use it, but we wanna make sure that you're connected with other cities and municipalities that are using it. Uh, because your experience using the software is gonna be completely different than the one that we may understand. Uh, because of our day-to-day activities versus the ones that an individual may take on.
And, and, and this may be a silly question, and, but I'm just gonna ask it, um. So seven hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, one hundred eighty and eighty-three cents. What is the, the, what is the, is that just for the basis or is it every year you have to pay another fee every year?
Yes, ma'am. So the um, initial costs, um. You know, and I know that some of the dates and stuff have changed here, so the initial cost of that seven hundred twenty-one thousand. Includes the first year cost as well as the implementation involved for all of the software, plus the um, travel. Uh, travel expenses related with everyone coming onsite just to be um, over those period of events, so. Um, each software is gonna have two onsite implement, or two onsite meetings where we're gonna train. Here at the City of La Mark as opposed to doing something on a Zoom uh, meeting of that sort. Uh, so that's included in that. Um, and then. Yeah, so it's just the software cost as well as the initial um, that implementation. And then. The subsequent years afterwards of like we mentioned, two hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred one, eight hundred and one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, that's just the ongoing cost of the software uh, year over year that would be incurred.
Yes, I'm, I'm in the wrong business. Okay, okay. So two hundred and fifty-one thousand, which is pretty, you know, it's pretty, pretty standard, so.
When you look at the scale of.
Right, right, and what, and what you, what you're offering, yeah. Okay, that's all I have there.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Guys, uh, I'm, I'm concerned about one thing and one thing only, uh. Timely, accurate, easily digestible, on-demand information. Can you all produce that? Can this software produce that?
Absolutely. That's where we started.
That's the issue in this city. The issue in this city is that nobody knows, we, we, we like to say. Where, where all the money is.
If you looked at the, the, the first slide we put up that had all of our solutions, at the very bottom, you've seen reporting and transparency. We started it as a, as a government transparency.
Say that, say that really loud into that microphone right there.
A government transparency.
You started as a government trans, trans what?
Transparency company. And that is at the core of everything. Reporting transparency acts as a mechanism or a. Foundation of all these solutions to bring all the data in these platforms to one system. So we reduce those data silos, everybody speaking the same language, you know, those right at the bottom, right there, public engagement, that can be shared with the public. To the extent that you see fit. That can be opening up the books entirely, that can be the online budget book.
Yeah.
That can be publications around strategic plans and initiatives. There is no limit to what we can publish out of the platform.
I, I was, I, I think um. One day last week, I was, I was up here uh, filming for um, for the winter storm and I believe. Uh, Acting Manager Pritchett, and I don't know if he was just kinda. Uh, having a joke with me, but he was sharing with me about the software. Uh, he was saying something to the effect, effect that this software. Uh, and I don't think that he meant literally, but figuratively, I, I hope, this software has the ability to do. Uh, a forensic audits. I didn't take that as literal. What I thought he meant was. We can have that level of, of oversight. Uh, and that level of detail at our fingertips. Is that safe to say that? That's what he was trying to communicate to me.
That, that is safe to say, yes.
So if there are questions from our community about line items or um, uh. Budget processes uh, or uh. Uh, uh, would you, uh, balances in different, different uh, different investments, yes, yes. We, we would be able to, to glean that information and share that with our community.
Uh, Mayor Bill, they would be able to glean that information for themselves because the data would be publicly accessible to them to do so. So they, so they're not having to come to um, to, to Ms. Nance or Ms. Turner or someone else or, or, or Mr. Pritchett. Uh, they have the ability to click on to the City of La Mark's website and see that data for themselves in real time.
Very good, that, that's.
If I may do you one better.
Absolutely.
Uh, when, when you do the budgeting process, we can actually itemize below the line item at the chart account level.
Whoa.
So if you wanna know what rolls up into a catch-all code, services or subscriptions or.
Office supplies.
Office supplies. We can break that down to a line item.
How, how uh, long, if, if this council were to vote in the affirmative tonight? How long would it take you guys? I was taking notes, so maybe you've answered this already. To, to have all of our information entered into this program where we would be able to manipulate the program and get, folks would be able to get. Answers to questions. And when we say, we have to clarify, when we say manipulate, we mean people being able to utilize. The system and receive information.
Sure. Um, I will, I will say this is the timeline we put together, projected um, from start to finish. Now, we'll tell you there will be parts of this software. That will be live before other sections of it, so um, there will be portions in the OpenGov financials. Um, the OpenGov procurement, OpenGov permitting, licensing, that will be live before everything is completely done. Um, as we think about, you know, the staff being completely inside of financials, probably about a nine-month window. Um, and that is respect to the day job that everyone's doing now. That's respect to the cross-training, that's respect to us moving. At a respectable pace as opposed to dropping everything and putting a hundred percent emphasis on this. Um, you know, so our team that will be doing the implementation that we've secured for this, uh, they've done all of the STW implementations across the state of Texas. So we have a commonality of understanding what's required by the state. We have a commonality of understanding what organizations are already doing. More importantly, they have that tribal knowledge of speaking the same language and helping bridge the gap. So that's gonna help us uh, bring down that timeframe that you see from February to October. Um, it could be, it could be faster. It's really just a matter of, you know, respect to the budget process and, and some of those things that kinda take precedent uh, at the city level.
Very good, thank you, thank you. Last thing I wanna do before we uh, act on this is, if you all would. Separate a little bit, I'm looking at, Ms. Turner, did you have anything you wanted as finance director? I didn't wanna leave you out of this discussion. I know you've done a lot of work to try to get us here. You gonna have to, if you. Oh, okay, if you wanna speak, you have to come forward. If you don't wanna speak, then it's entirely up to you. Alright, alright, well, we're gonna get to that. Thank you, I wanted, didn't wanna leave you out. Counsel, if there's nothing further, Kiara, Ms. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Nance, where are we?
We don't have a motion.
I am entertaining now a motion.
So moved.
Is that second? Any further discussion? Here you go, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Seven, eight, purchase city park awnings, requesting approval. Requesting approval to purchase two awnings utilizing the park's user fee to install at West Lawn Park for the amount of five thousand. Seven hundred and seventy dollars. Counsel, do you have any questions for seven, eight? Here you go, now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here you go, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? We are finally here. You have been waiting patiently, patiently. Yes, sir, I am, I am, I am so sorry that you've had to wait, but here we are. Here we are, and here we go. Seven, nine, request for rezoning property. Discussion possible action on whether to initiate the zoning amendment process for a portion of a city block of real property. Currently zoned as general commercial, commonly known as forty-seven fifteen Partridge Street, forty-seven eleven Partridge Street. Forty-seven oh seven Partridge Street, forty-seven oh five Partridge Street. Uh, to single-family residential and provide appropriate direction to the city manager. Uh, sounds like, uh, if I'm not mistaken, ah, there you are, Mr. Ellison, you can, you can confirm this or deny it. But it seems like, it appears like these parcels of land were inadvertently uh, rezoned somehow to commercial. Uh, without uh, any uh, inspection or deliberation or any uh, conversation with the property owner.
Previous uh, city manager, Garcia, my second day, we drove up to this neighborhood. And Mr. Mazzola has been patiently going through this process. Started the process, the lot was originally residential, only to find out when he wanted to go to house. You can't because it's commercial. He goes, what do you mean it's commercial?
Yeah.
There, there's a lot of industrial, commercial building on one side of the street. There's a residential house behind that. Opposite side of the streets are residential, all the way back as far as you can see is residential. So I built six houses all the way across and then. I even have, my son lives in a corner house and on the other corners where this lot is, and there's all residential in that lot also. But my thought is what they did, they tried, there's a lot across the street from the commercial building, which is a category for me. They parked five hundred cars every day. Well, maybe I'm exaggerating, a ton of cars there at that. And I think what they tried to do was make that a commercial lot. And whoever did it. Either didn't know how to read the map or didn't go out there and actually look at it.
Right.
Because they're still parking the cars on that lot and it's residential.
Yeah.
So I, I think it was an accident is what I'm, I'm gonna.
That's what it sounds like.
Short, short answer is, yes, that, that is correct. All those should be residential on that side of the street.
Very familiar with you, Mr. Mazzola. Um, I had a couple of street meetings out on Partridge Street and, and. Those neighbors that bought the homes from you, your name was. Up in, in conversation about building those homes, so I'm familiar with the properties. And the fact that you've built several homes out there, absolutely. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Ellison or Mr. Mazzola on this issue?
Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna have to de- declare conflict because of a. Familiar family relationship with, I think this is part of this.
Camp Bean, is that the, is that the Camp Bean? I saw that, I saw that. Uh, recognized, and so we'll go, we'll move on without you. Uh, Counsel, I think we have three of us and we can handle this on our own, so I will entertain a motion.
What's the motion?
Uh-oh.
Yes. It changed you to.
To.
So, no, the, I don't know, it was zoned commercial. What is before y'all today is the process to begin the amendment process. Under the ordinances like we did a couple of years ago, an amendment can be done. Under the ordinances like we did a couple of years ago, an amendment can be done three ways. Can be commenced three ways. Proper, normally, property owner. P N Z can do it. Or counsel on its own motion can make a motion to start the amendment process. That is what we are doing.
Tonight.
So, and providing that direction to J B so that staff can send the two hundred-foot notices, convene the P N Z, P N Z makes its report, it comes back to y'all. That, that's what we're doing tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, yes, sir, you can.
In the county maps, it's still residential, always been residential.
Hmm.
In twenty twenty-one, somebody went out there and flipped it and made it commercial. So we're just trying to fix an error they made in the first place, we're not trying to make some new whole new exception.
Yeah, and and I understand that, but as I understand it, the ordinance that was passed zoned it commercial. And how that came to be, I don't know, but it did. And the process in the local govern, we have to follow the local government code.
These houses out there that are now commercial paying commercial rate taxes also.
There's not a separate rate for, for commercial, the, the City of Lamarck assesses a general rate, a, a, it assesses one rate for property taxes, there's not a separate rate for commercial. Now, there is a separate rate for water and sewer for commercial and residential, but I have no idea what they're doing. And uh what these homes are paying, I don't know. And if these homes were residential when it was zoned residential.
Those homes that are out there, they've been out there for thirty years.
Right, well, they can continue to be there, just like with the building code that we did earlier tonight. If you're conforming when it's, when, if you're conforming when the home is built, then you can continue to step, then you can continue to utilize that use.
What reason would you throw a commercial lot right in the middle of residential subdivision? I'm not gonna open up a C B D store there.
I don't.
None of the neighbors would be happy about that.
I don't know that, I, I don't know that, but your question right there is not an excuse to throw the entire section of the local government code dealing with zoning out the window. No, I, I know, so we're just trying to follow the processes off.
We just think they accidentally switched it from the corner to
Yeah.
Catty corner, that's what we think they did.
I understand that, and as we go through this process, if somebody can show me that and show us that.
Well, let, let's uh, so, but, but, but the, 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 we believe that that's what, what, what has happened, Mr. Mazzola. That's why the council is, is inserting itself and directing the city manager to start the process is because I think that we generally believe it was an inadvertent mistake. Uh and this is the fastest way to correct it by law. Yeah, and 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 basically, all we're doing is directing him to start the process. Process will, will be over before you know it. Uh and I'm sure that we'll all be able to move forward pretty, pretty quickly, so. I will uh I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor Proton.
For clarification, then, I need to clarify. This is not, as the agenda states, a request for rezoning property.
It says to initiate the process, that's what we're asking you all to do.
That's what we're asking you all to do.
We're not asking you all to, to.
The reason, we're not, we're not acting the reason, we're act, we're directing the city manager to initiate the whole process.
Which is, which is the council's right under seventy-one point two six B one of the city's Code of Ordinances. It says, an amendment to this chapter may be initiated by city council on its own motion.
So these homeowners that are listed here.
What, and, and, and what we thought, going with what Mr. Mazzola, we could have just rezoned that one. But we thought, I thought, perhaps wrongly, that if all of these lots are in fact, have single-family homes on them, then we should address this now for all of them, not just do his and then two years from now, three year, however long, we have
Council, different, yeah.
We have another homeowner whose home has burned down or something has happened and is back here before us.
Right.
With the, and, and we're all, uh, we're, we're all gone and people are, a new set of people are all here going.
What happened?
So that, that is why we thought to address it this way, Mayor Proton.
Right, I seen it listed that way and I was, I was confused myself.
Yeah.
I thought we'd just do my lot and I do understand that whole, otherwise, you know, might fix it all one time and get over with.
Yeah, that's, that was my thought process, right.
Well, I, well, I'm, I'm, I, I'm gonna disagree with the process, because I don't think we're in a position to speak for these other property. You individually have coming up. Because these other property owners may have, may want that commercial zoning designation because they may sell at a future date and that is a, a, an asset there uh for, for a business property. Uh so I, I um I'm pointing that out.
Well, so, well, so a ni- a couple of things. One, I think the Mayor Proton, you did declare a conflict, but
But that, yeah, when I, when I thought that it was a zoning, now it's not a zoning.
And secondly, two hundred-foot notice letters will go out.
Right.
So these peop, these homeowners are gonna receive notice
Right.
not only of a zoning change next to them, but of their property.
Oh, their own property.
So, yeah, you know, they, and, and they will be free to, as any concerned citizen is, send in written comment to the P N Z, come to the P N Z, send in written comment to you all, or come to you, come to this council, come to a council meeting to express their
So what happened to, just say, third house decides, we don't want to go back to residential. Would that still uh monkey wrench in the whole process?
I mean, I, I think that uh nothing I say here today can bind the council on what they will do. But I think that the council, more than one of them have expressed a willingness to move forward with this. It, and, and Mr. Mazzola, I'm not gonna tell you how to, to go about this process, but if you want to bring in something signed by these people, saying that they are in support of this, if they can't come, that would probably help the council.
The other option is just, and just change my law, not even, but then
Right, 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 yeah.
I'm representing myself, like you said.
Right, right.
And if they, if they don't want to come in and have any problem with it, I mean, that's between them and whoever.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it'll be more problems down the road, I think, I think.
I do agree.
Yeah, I, 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 I can only speak for me, I'm, I'm ready to move forward, Ms. Nancy, Mr. Ross? Um, are y'all ready to move forward or y'all still over there passing notes?
One, one question.
I'm teasing, they, they're not passing notes, Mr. Ellison, go ahead.
Just to clarify the process.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna both move forward to the city manager, city manager's gonna kick it back to planning and zoning?
The city manager will
Kicking it back to us.
Yes, the city manager is gonna direct you all to go through the uh you all, Mr. Ellison, not you all, Mr. Mazzola. Sorry, I realize as I'm looking at both people, um to go through, to treat this as you would any other rezone request from a homeowner. So the application, either I'll fill, somebody will fill it out, it'll go to P N Z, the letters will go out, the hearing will be conducted.
And it'll end up back at council.
Back here.
What about the fees for the rezoning?
Sure, so since the council is doing this on its own motion, the fees would come from the city.
So we're looking at next month's planning and zoning meeting.
Probably, yeah, yeah.
It's already been six weeks.
It's gonna, it's gonna be months, don't, don't, honestly?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, it, it's, it's, it's such a slow process, I, I.
It's gonna be terrible. However, I would like to tell you that I've been pushing to get an ordinance review board, which this would fall underneath together so that we can look at every ordinance and pick, and make our ordinances in the city better. So please sign up for that or run for my seat while I sign up for the
You're District D, aren't you?
No, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, are we ready? Uh do we, do we have a motion? The motion, I think the point that Gus was trying to make is the motion is not to rezone, we're not a spot rezoning organization. The motion is to uh direct the city manager to begin the process of rezoning, which has to go through planning and zoning and, and other, other uh uh processes before it comes back, Mr. Mazzola, to us. It's weird, it's really weird. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Aye, second.
Joe, are you in or you out? Where are you?
On this one, I'm in.
You're in, okay.
Because this is not a result.
Very good, let's uh, let's uh, any further discussion? Here you go, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, counsel. Uh we are now, uh we're on our way.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your patience. We're now at city manager's report, as always, counsel, we're gonna go down the line, if you have one or more than one that you'd like to uh address, uh certainly let me know. Eight, one. Eight, two. Eight, thir, did you say?
I said, hold on one second, let me get my, in front of me.
Let me start over again.
All right.
Eight, one.
Uh I would like the sales tax.
Now, you, is that an eight, one?
That's
Okay, eight, one, James wants eight, one, eight, two.
I don't, but just the sales tax.
Eight, three, I want eight, three.
I would like eight, two also, the
You want eight, two? The quarterly investment, okay, eight, eight, one, eight, two, eight, three.
Money is money.
Absolutely, eight, four. Eight, five. Eight, six.
Yes.
Got one, eight, six, eight, seven. Eight, eight. Eight, nine.
I would like, give, I'd like to know what eight, nine really.
Eight, nine?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll pull eight, nine out. Eight, ten.
Understand that, Paul.
Eight, ten. Eight, eleven, I want to pull eight, eleven. All right, counsel, let's uh, let's go back, eight, one, Mr. Ross.
Uh I would like to hear about the monthly sales tax reports because I kept hearing how bad we were gonna be doing and it looks like it's exactly the opposite.
Exactly the opposite.
Ms. Turner Avery's gonna get you a chair. Unless you'd rather stand, okay.
Welcome, Ms. Turner. Eight, one. Uh I believe Mr. Ross has uh wants a, a little insight on that, is it fourteen percent increase in sales tax for the first four months of the fiscal year?
Okay, so we know that January, and I'll just start there. The January um receipt of revenue was really for November.
Right.
You know, it's always a two-month lag, right, for lack of better terms. Um our highest month was December, so that was really any sales tax that occurred in October. So your question is, why does it seem like it's going down from thirty-six to thirty-nine?
No, they increased.
I had to put out that we are having a much better sales tax season right now compared to what has been forecasted that we were gonna have in the city by other people. I really wanted people to that aren't actually following along in the agenda to see that our sales taxes continue to go up.
And, and they are, if you look at December's number, that is a, a, a huge jump of thirty-six percent. So we are.
I just kind of want people to
Yeah.
to understand that we're actually doing much better than, than has been predict, projected by most places in this country.
Yes, we are.
Sales taxes.
I don't, we, uh, looking at the last, what, previous year? If you look at those two columns, from twenty-three to twenty-four, you, it was for October, six hundred fifteen thousand, you can see same time last fiscal year, six seventy-five. So if you compare those two columns, you can actually see the growth.
With, with forty-five expansion. With, with all of the hardships that this country has faced, with, with high X and
But we've had more and more um retail spots opening, you know, I guess, what was it, the churches, we have Raising Canes, um the salad
Salad go, Riley's, the list goes on and on, I'm just trying to
Yeah.
I would just wanted to showcase that there is movement that people said weren't gonna have, wasn't going to
I would say also, on top of that, is the diligence of our finance team to make sure that all of the entities in the City of Lamarck that need and should be reporting sales tax uh are doing so as well. And so Ms. Turner and, and her staff has worked at making sure uh each and every business that is in the City of Lamarck that is a reported business, that we are collecting sales tax from them as well. And so again, just like we talk about water loss from sixty percent, well, we, we get it down to forty percent because we're improving infrastructure, not just buying more water. And so in order to gain more sales tax, what we have been doing is, well, and this has kind of been my phrase the last few weeks, is tightening up to make sure that we're not losing money, because to your point, Mr. Ross, losing water is one thing, losing money is a different, money is money. And so that's uh the second side of the coin of the sales tax report.
Very good.
And while I'm here, Mayor, I just wanna, I did make a statement earlier, but can I make it now?
Yes, ma'am.
So now that the whole council, y'all approve this software, um I just want to give a kudos out to my team. They are gonna be buckling down, cause in the midst of doing a software conversion, we also have an audit.
Sure.
We also have budget.
Yep.
So um we're, we're gonna be buckling down, go ahead, Acting City Manager.
I was gonna say, and amendments.
And amendments are coming up.
Amendments, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank.
While you're here, uh, Mr. Ross also wanted to uh speak on item eight-two, which is the quarterly investment reports.
I think my computer just went to you. Okay, any questions about that?
Mr. Ross.
Can you please let people under- understand that are not sitting here actually reading it? Uh the difference between the detailed budget and the actual general fund that you have here, what they're not seeing.
Okay, you talking about the investment report or you talking about the monthly report?
Uh this is the
The monthly
Budget versus general fund, this is all inside the quarterly month audit.
They must have uploaded it incorrectly, but I think you're talking about the monthly report, this is November.
Monthly report.
Okay, okay.
Want people to understand.
I think they uploaded the wrong thing into the wrong
Oh, they opened.
Okay. Um, so what this is, is this was, we do not have a mechanism that could run a monthly financial report. So um I had to create something. And this is what I created. Um it, it kind of details the general fund. A look at the general fund at seventeen percent, so seventeen percent, we have October, which starts our new fiscal year. That's eight point three three percent, then we go to November, that's seventeen percent. So basically, I just wanted to give um counsel a snapshot of what is occurring by way of our general fund, revenues, and then our expenditures. So as you flip through the report, it's gonna give a variance analysis. Um say for our revenue section, you'll look at the property taxes, it's gonna compare our budget to what we have year-to-date actuals. And then it also compares the previous fiscal year. Yielding a percentage that's supposed to be around at this time of the um, the fiscal year, seventeen percent. So it's gonna show that some of the revenue line items they're running right at target, some may be over and some may be below. And then that goes the same for the expenses. Um you could have expenses, if you're on target, you're seventeen percent or slightly below. If you're running a little higher on your expenses, it's gonna be over to seventeen percent.
So on a monthly basis, for the people that aren't accountants in the room, on a monthly basis, it's basically eight and a third percent of your budget should be spent.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think, Ms. Turner, uh you and I are the only ones with finance degrees on staff and we're the only ones that geek out over these spreadsheets.
Right.
Uh but what we, yeah, but what we kind of talked about with this is to make it to make it easily understandable, not only by counsel but for the general public so that we know and understand, because Ms. Turner and her staff not only send out to every single department head, not every single division uh as well as myself, these reports so that we can go line by line and then we will, uh, what we do is we attach explanations to them. So that if i- i- if Chief Aragon's uh overtime budget is twelve percent higher than what it should be at this point of the year, there are attachments that say, well,
Why?
Why? And, and obviously, then there's reconciliation behind that. Um we talked about specifically when it comes to paying back our general fund, such as disaster fund, such as paying back our general fund, such as disaster fund, such as, uh, having to work, um, and, and having those overtime budgets come from an events fund such as Bayou Fest. And so those explanations are a way for not only the finance department, but for administration to be able to track, to know specifically where those variances are, whether it's above, whether it's below, all of the above. Because there's a good number of line items as well that are under for the year. But we also know those are one-time expenses that come out July, August, because of annual renewals. So it, you will see it kind of zeroed out until it is time to purchase it, to which that would be the full budgeted amount, and we have that in the notes as well. Uh, along with that explanation is, you know, in the event of a hurricane or anything, we are tracking those overtime budgets, police, fire, public works, so that they would get repaid, uh, if an emergency had been declared, when those monies come back from, from the federal government as well.
And I know that transparency is a major factor for our city. So I wanted to implement, in talking with acting city manager, ways for our departments to be more accountable.
Yes, ma'am.
For their expenses. You have to explain why your budget has gone over the twenty-five percent threshold as of December. So we have a process. We close at a certain time of the month, for the previous month. The, uh, budget versus actual reports go out to department heads. You have twenty-four hours to return an explanation. And then I can go through and create this report to present to you.
I would, I would love for us as a council and as a community to get, uh, a, a brief overview of all of these new processes that y'all have implemented to try to, to, uh, be more transparent, uh, and, and to hold departments more accountable. That's, that's something that I, I think that this is my first time hearing what you said. And so, uh, and we are, uh, this council is probably closest in proximity to, to the information that goes on internally. So if we are hearing it for the first or second time, certainly it's advantageous for us to provide that information to our community members. You're doing great work and making great strides at making sure we are transparent. For example, there is a, uh, there are two, uh, departments that are slightly over budget, uh, in, in our, in our city, police being one and fire being the other. Uh, but when you look at the materials underneath, both of those have been largely attributed to overtime that was accrued during, uh, wha- what was it? Bayou Fest? I think it was Bayou Fest. Uh, right? So that's, that's.
But those amounts have been reclassed out.
Right, right, right. So, but I mean, but, but to know that they're over budget, but to know it's tied to Bayou Fest.
Right.
Right?
Right.
I- is different than just thinking that these departments are not being accountable.
And also making those notes.
It looks different.
Also making those notes, because whereas, uh, Winter Storm Enzo was not a declared emergency, it is expenses that we, uh, overtime, and we'll get into this, but, um, it, it is also, uh, the, and I was gonna share this for the, at the end of City Manager Report, uh, item twelve or items go to the order, but you know, there are overtime when it comes to opening the warming center, when it comes to all of the aspects of what we needed to do in order to monitor those things, but, uh, those are also notated on here as well, because those are overtime expenses that accrue that we will not receive federal monies to come back to reimburse. But the nature of doing the work and the will of the people, they are hard costs that we did accrue, and so we wanna make sure to notate that so that next year or four months from now, and we say, well, why is the overtime bought? You know, come budget season, why, why would you need overtime in those amounts? Well, if you look at the last three years of these reports as time marches on, we typically have tropical depressions, we have certain things that are not covered or declared disasters, but we do accrue a cost in those specific department.
Right.
And then the next report coming up next month is gonna be the end of a quarter. So I really want the, um, department heads to dive in to their numbers, and I can explain it on the report.
So Ms. Turner, because I'm a numbers person, I like graphs and charts and all that, and I can sit down with pen and paper. Mayor and I have actually sat down with pen and paper, and I've taken every number that was written there and did all the math in front of them instead of doing it. But if this is gonna be a quarterly report, can you?
No, it's monthly. It's actually monthly.
Well, I, okay, it, it said quarterly report on the front of it. So, but what's a quarter? At the end or the beginning of the next quarter, when you do the report, could you have a line there? This, this is where we should be at for quarter two. This is how much should be spent. Across the page, that way everybody can go, okay, we spent fifty percent now, this is where we should be at, and you can see that department up or down, above and below it. Where they're at on that line. Where our revenues are coming in.
Right.
Where our expenses are at.
Okay.
Just makes it.
Some line items I can do like that. Other ones will be a little bit more difficult.
Right.
To kind of summer time differently.
The revenue one here, and, okay, we understand their property taxes come in, they don't some people are late, some people are early. Where should we be at at this point in time? Okay, just put a line across there and then we can see it. Okay, we're above it, we're below it, and compared to last year, we're doing it back.
Okay.
You know, that way visual representation for people is.
Okay. And then I would, I, I would probably get these, well, I will get them uploaded to our website.
Oh, yeah. But I
Okay.
I love what y'all are doing over there. It's been, been amazing. I like being able to go check, check register online.
Right.
And, um, low-hanging fruit helps keep us from getting in trouble.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Okay.
No, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, item eight, three, that would be me and Chief Aragon. Chief, I really don't have, uh, any questions. I just wanted to, you can come on. I, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to share with the public, uh, our constantly and continually falling crime statistics. This past year, uh, twenty twenty-four, it looks like violent crime for twenty twenty-four was down eleven percent. It looks like property crime for twenty twenty-four was down fifteen percent. And overall crime for twenty twenty-four is down fourteen percent. Now, the last four years, chief, crime has been down nineteen percent, two percent, thirty-four percent, and fourteen percent. We have not had a year where crime has risen. And I wanted to make that known here tonight. First of all, to thank you and your officers for the work that you all have done uh, on our Safe City Initiative. Uh, you have taken it seriously, your officers have effectively impacted, uh, the, the, uh, issue of crime in our city. Uh, the, all of the things that you all have implemented, uh, have proven, uh, to provide dividends for our community. And I just wanted to share that again, and akin to what Mr. Ross, uh, was doing with the finance reports. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, people that are concerned about our crime, uh, in our community. Uh, in fact, I'll say this. The other day, there was a, uh, murder in our city. I believe it was the first one that we've had in an entire year, if I'm not mistaken.
So far.
Um, um, and it was domestic in nature.
Yes, sir.
Happens in every city. Uh, but it seems as though when, when the, the location is Lamarck, there is a bunch of, uh, shenanigans going on as far as, uh, people making unflattering comments, negative comments uh, about our city, about, uh, the, uh, the amount of crime there is in our city, uh, about the people in our city. There, there's a whole lot of negative, uh, uh, feedback when, when people, uh, become aware that a crime has been committed in Lamarck. So the other day, I believe it happened exactly like that. There was a domestic issue, person unfortunately passed away. Uh, this was reported by news outlets, uh, and the barrage of negativity came forth. Not to mention that, and, and I love these cities, don't mean any harm, other mayors. Do you know how many people died in the city of Friendswood between the last time we, not that, well, how many people were murdered in the city of Friendswood? From the last time that we had a murder until this last murder was, was reported? More, more than one. League City, Texas City, Galveston, Dickinson. All of these cities have more murders, have had more murders this past calendar year, and probably the last two calendar years than the city of Lamarck. And yet, it is our city, always. Whenever there is, uh, any sort of news breaking about crime in our city, ah, there goes Lamarck again, there goes Chi-Rac, there goes, it ain't nothing but thugs and criminals and but when you look at the numbers, Chief Aragon, Chief Randall Aragon, when you look at the numbers, you see a different story.
Yes, sir, we do.
It's our city whose crime has fallen.
Right.
Steadily, over the last four or five years, uh, since about twenty twenty-one, when we started this endeavor, uh, Council and Police Department. And again, I wanted to give you your flowers while you were still here as our chief. Um, and I wanted to, to just have you comment on, on that, that fact that crime is down in Lamarck, and I don't know if crime is up in other cities. I just know it's down in Lamarck.
Yes, sir.
So you can speak to that if you like.
You're running target, Mayor. Uh, I called, uh, last year I called another city I won't mention just to ask a question, and, uh, the crime was up. And a, a lot of other cities in our county, if you, if, if the citizens do ask their police chief, a lot of them are going up, and we're going down, and we're doing some, we're doing some good things, and, uh, this Safe City Initiative that you pioneered in, in twenty-one, it's working. Uh, as you mentioned, violent crime is down eleven percent, twenty-four, we're twenty-three. Property crime is down fifteen percent, and overall crime is down fourteen percent. That's miraculous with all the factors going on in the world that cause crime, and we've mentioned that before. High unemployment, low income, large amount of single-parent families, many of the things that cause, cause crime. So we're doing really good at that. And we need help, as I mentioned before. I wanted the council to know, and you to know, Mayor and City Manager, to know that, uh, this cannot be sustained if we don't have the other factors to help us, like edu- uh, economic development, uh, increasing our businesses, which is going, which is happening, which is happening. And I wanna say this, and besides the crime going down, I, I, and I, to make it short, all the good things are going up, and I wanna cover that real quick, and all the bad things are going down, such as crime we just mentioned. Um, calls for service, twenty-four, we're twenty-three, forty percent increase in calls for service, went from about fifteen K, uh, to, uh, fourteen K to about almost twenty thousand calls for service. We're doing more. Uh, the arrests have gone up nineteen percent for adult. I know it's only a le- eleven difference, but juvenile arrests have gone up quite a bit. Uh, DWI cases that we made, fifty-three percent increase from twenty-four to twenty-three. Uh, drug and narcotic seizures, s- almost sixty-seven percent increase. So all the good things are going up, the bad things are going down. We're doing a good job. Uh, thanks to Council, City Manager, and all of you, Mayor. All this equipment we're getting from the grant people, uh, most of it is, uh, no match. This is all really helping us. So I wanna thank you all for your support. We wouldn't get there without, uh, you all helping us.
Thanks, chief. Item eight, five, uh, invitation to bid. Uh, Shannon, I believe this might be your, uh, your area. Uh, I believe this is Mr. Ross as well. Invitation to bid, twelve-inch water distribution line.
Saying we're gonna bid on a whole bunch of, which project is this?
So this is actually a phase two of a four-phase project that was, uh, approved by Council, if I remember correctly, uh, last year. Uh, I wasn't, uh, here on, I, I was working here, I wasn't a part of that process when it was going on. I do know this is from a stone wall all the way down to Newman Road, going down past forty-five. We're replacing that with that twelve-inch PVC water line. It's gonna be about thirty-three total connections. Um, this is gonna be coming out of the impact fees, uh, so it won't be the bond projects we have going on.
Outstanding.
There.
Perfect. I just need to be updated on that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jenna.
Alright, no problem.
Did you want to jump in?
Our water line is also what's gonna permit the fire hydrants
Yes, sir.
to be installed along
Yes, sir.
When that gentleman came in and said that we'd neglected that.
Yes, sir. We have about twenty-five fire hydrants being installed along this line.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem.
Item eight, nine, that is the All-America Draft Marketing Plan. That's Mr. Ross as well. Is that you, Mr. Pritchett?
It can be, yes, sir.
Alright.
Do you have a question, or did you want me to discuss?
Please just explain everything that's going on with it. It's been.
Absolutely. So, uh, the report in here is kind of two-fold. It talks about a little bit of what we have done uh, in the past already, as well as kind of what our plans are moving forward. Where we've been in the past, obviously, is, um, not just immediately following the win in Denver, Colorado, of being a twenty twenty-four All-America City. Lamarck really made, uh, a, a whole plan, whether that has been from our editorial inside Lamarck, as well as commemorating and being in the National Civic League, um, write-ups as well. One of the things that we l- looked at currently in this report, as you will see, are what are called Overstreet banners, so that they can, um, I'm sorry, the Overstreet banner is at Verson Laurel, uh, provided by the EDC that hangs over if you drive down there. Uh, what we did is we're, uh, again, with that plan is to make sure the commemorative plan is to make sure that that logo is attached, uh, to all of staff email signatures and on letterhead as well. Partnering with, uh, Bay Area Ha- uh, Economic Partnership, uh, BayHEP, uh, is to celebrate and work with uh, also our Texas City Lamarck Chamber of Commerce as a three-pronged approach for this plan. And I believe part of that conversation, Mayor, was involved with over Zoom. But what that is, is partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, as well as BayHEP, to have a concise effort to make Lamarck and put Lamarck in the rooms that it needs to do in order to attract businesses and/or development uh, in the seven, seven, five, six, eight. That is very strategic in the rooms specifically, not just to put the All-American City logo in our email signatures, not to just put it on our street banners, not just to put it, hopefully, fingers crossed, on our water towers, but it is also making sure that we're communicating this, not only from Texas City Managers Association, the International City Managers Association, when, uh, our Economic Development Corporation goes to ICSC Red River, um, at the end of the week, they're gonna be in front of all the retail developers and all the above. So we're using this as a propulsion to attract Lamarck to potent, potential developers, because it, it without, you know, with lack of better saying, it puts Lamarck on the map to the right people. And I'll be the first to tell you, I ha- I, I have gone back and forth with the All-American City being, uh, a headache, a headache of the, of the application, of the proposal of going to Denver to defend our honor, um, as the city of Lamarck. Uh, but ultimately, it's been a win not only for a hundred and ninety-two employees, for five council seats, for twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven citizens, and the next twenty thousand that will call Lamarck home. And so for, and, and I think that it, we've talked about it up and down and left and right, what we're purposefully doing is, this is opening doors, not only for staff, not only for Economic Development Corporation, but also the Chamber of Commerce and BayHEP as a whole, as they develop this entire region in corridor of forty-five, Highway Three, and surrounding areas that shows that one, not only Lamarck is open for business, but it is saying that staff and council are behind a proposal of new and new developments and new businesses, new home developments as well, to call Lamarck home. And so, um, you know, the AAC and the logo has been the butt of a joke. It has been, um, it, it, it's been. it it's been a couple of things, but I will tell you one thing that it is exceptionally is something that we as staff are very proud of because we put blood, sweat, and tears into it. Not to do it for a political reason, but to do it because this is our job. This is our job to create a community that we're proud of and to bring more development, residential and business into the city of Lamarck so that we can all grow for a city to be proud of in twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty-five, and twenty forty-five and beyond.
Thanks, sir. Item eight, eleven is the summer camp.
I'm gonna bring Ms. Amy Miller, library director.
Hello again. Mrs. Amy Miller, how are you?
Doing good. Thank you. I wanted to bring this before y'all, kind of early in the year, to let you know that I've met with staff and we and with Mr. Pritchett, and we have at least the beginnings of an idea for the direction that we want to go for summer camp this this coming summer. And I kind of gave you a bit of an outline of what me and my staff are thinking. If you want to go in a different direction, then we still have time to do that. But these are some of the preliminary ideas that we have.
Mayor, do you mind if I elaborate on one or two items?
Go ahead.
So I wanted to talk about specifically, and I think it's been talked about a lot, that Amy Miller, Amy Miller is, well, pun intended, middle name, but a jewel for the city of Lamarck. And I think we we learned this in twenty twenty-four, some things that, and by direction of this council, things that we do well and things that we don't necessarily would have the bandwidth for or lack certain aspects to do, one of which is summer camp, to the complexity that we potentially could do it on our own. Not that we couldn't do it for the youth of Lamarck, but one thing that's big with me is after-action review. So after we do something, we have, you know, I give them a week to to really meet with her staff and talk about the things that we do well versus the things that we need to improve on. And so they came up with this plan that is a Lamarck Summer Art, Art, it's a Summer of Art and Kindness, and it's called Color, Create, and Connect. And so rather than, and and again, some of the issues that we run at with city facilities, roof leaks, AC, heating, all of these things, Amy Miller reached out to our partners at Texas City ISD and Haley Elementary to be the host site for this camp. We already worked with them on so many other things, summer reading programs as well as trunk or treat. And so why not, again, strengthen that bond? And so we we've already talked with them at already using the gymnasium, the courtyard, they have restrooms, classrooms. They will have meals provided by TCISD, as well as Amy's staff with our youth program coordinator and the summer interns that will be coming on to have a very concise plan to make sure that we don't run into certain hiccups that we had never done before in twenty twenty-four. And so hindsight, in our after-action review, we pointed a few of those bullet points out and then made sure that we came back early in the year, so we're not coming to you in May or June, right before school lets out, to say, oh, well, we can figure something out. We want to be very intentional in planning, not only with our school districts, but using that youth fund and our summer internship program, because we get a lot of those students that are leaders in their own schools, at Lamarck High School, whether it be through student council, so that we can make sure that we have the necessary safety certifications, the trainings, and and obviously just operation as a whole.
Very good. My my only comment, Amy, is that I think that the program needs to be longer. Looks like you all have designated two weeks. I wanted personally eight weeks. But it sounds like you have a summer program in June, a summer reading program in June.
That's that's something that perhaps I haven't done my job in making y'all aware that the library does a lot of programming in the summer. The summertime is like our Super Bowl of programming with the summer reading program that we do every year. For example, last year, we added over thirty extra programs on top of the ones that we were already offering just for the summer. So that's our our big focus in the summer and adding a summer camp component on top of that. Like Mr. Pritchett said, it's not that we can't do it, we can, but to do it to the level and the quality that we would like to see, I've got to limit it to what is realistic for me and my staff. And that's why the short timeframe. In fact, I made note here that instead of trying to run the summer reading program simultaneously with the camp, we would do summer reading earlier in the summer for the month of June and then leave July open so that we can focus more on camp.
I I I get that. I I would like personally for us to make it longer. I I don't want to tread on June. I think that we can do all of July and perhaps the first week in August. Now, I'm saying that, and I'm willing, one, one council person, one vote. I'm willing to work with the library to establish a a summer camp or summer program coordinator. It's seasonal. A month, six weeks, find an intern who is close to graduating with a degree in education or something of that in nature, and have that person be the person primarily responsible for for executing what you plan. I do get that your your library staff is overwhelmed. I'm hearing you say that, which is why I'm saying I'm willing to add resources, won't be but a couple of thousand dollars. But I think that it's important that our kids get a full summer program, right? Again, I would I would have loved eight weeks, but I would I would go with four right now. You have two already that you, looks like that you're 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 planning. I would like to, again, one vote, see an additional two, and I would support additional staff to make sure that that's that's done.
That would be more realistic if I could get more.
Yes, ma'am.
Resources, I think.
Yes, ma'am. JB, would you, for this council, would you work that up to get get more help so that we can get a four-week? If I'm saying something that that four of you all don't like, let me know. I'm just trying to get a four-week summer camp. Would you would you work that program up for us? You know, whatever help you would, your staff would need so that we can approve it. Because summer camps are important to kids. And, you know, it's it's important to our kids. I believe they benefited from the camp last year. Yes, ma'am. But excellent work. I don't have any complaints. Just wanted to make it longer. Council, do we have anything else for Ms. Miller?
I champion what the mayor's saying. I would I would love to see a four-week if we can do it. Three-week if we had to cut one off. But is there any way during it you could do some kind of fundraising event? Like big kid at heart, but if you do jump rope for heart, get a dime for every time you skip the rope, right? Well, if we do a five K fun run and each kid that's in the group has a sign-up sheet and they get a dime for every meter they go, and it goes back into just this fun for the summer camp. Is there some way to do that? Or they get twenty-five cents for every meter that they do? I mean.
That's not something I've ever considered, but that doesn't mean we can't.
And I think one of you'd get with one of the color blasts to go along with your thing and got the color smoke and all that stuff. Oh, yeah, that'd be so much fun. I would walk it instead of run it, but it would still.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Miller. Council, we are at item eight, twelve, and that is Items for the Good of the Order. Acting Manager, Pritchett.
First and foremost, what I wanted to bring up for Items Good of the Order when it comes from me is the operations as it pertain to Winter Storm Enzo. Obviously, I think we were all a little saddened because we were planning on being at the Martin Luther King Junior Parade that Monday. However, nature took its course, and I I first and foremost would like to commend all departments, all departments of the city of Lamarck, because we were we were in communication as early as that weekend, as far as what would potentially need to be done. We were trying to plan the week before because with Monday being a holiday, I wanted to make sure every department and every staff member that has the ability, which is more and more, to to take calls, to to do the work from laptops at their homes, VPN, all of the access that is is needed to ensure that we were at least fielding calls for people calling that day to know if trash was gonna get picked up, if their water was gonna get cut off because they couldn't get out of their house due to the weather to pay the bill. All of that was a very unified front from all of staff, and it's something that we've talked over the last few weeks. Something that frankly, regardless of 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 anything that we will continue to do together, togetherness and accountability across the board from all the departments. With that being said, I will I will commend all of police, fire, and public works that made some creative decisions when it came to clearing roads, when it came to the warming center, on top of communications to to trying to get information out there. Again, this is a unified effort. It was in no way, shape, or form one person, one department. But but really, what we have said already is our our word for twenty twenty-five, at least my word for twenty twenty-five, is the word accountability. And I think that if I could single out a few citizens, Mrs. Pennington, Eva Livy, Maggie Manuel, and and a few others that I'm kind of spacing out right now, reached out, whether it was social media, whether it was the phone, to ask the things that we've heard time and time again from the city of Lamarck, from the time that I've walked in here, from my time in communications and as deputy city manager and and beyond. One of the things that we've always talked about is how do we get information out there? How are we receiving information? How are we fielding phone calls? How are we making sure that the process of for of governing as well as caretaking our city as a whole is done properly in a timely manner? It's something that that frankly, I I take no credit whatsoever as the sole proprietor. I take it as currently the leader of that week and and all the work that we had to do on top of that, everybody was very flexible. Ms. Turner was still calling me about reports and still asking me about different things so that we could be set up. Utility billing and court were fielding phone calls and and having to reset court dates because of that. And and I think that it was just, again, I, if I could say anything, it was a unified effort from not only our citizens, from council, each 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 one of council made the conscious and just heartfelt donations from their different resources so that we could be there for our citizens in the time of need. I'm very pleased that we did not have a mass power loss. Texas, New Mexico, and Center Point reported in Galveston County to have seventy-eight total homes in the entire county that power went down. And the only time that we received power outages was a small window on a street, but they got that fixed really quick. But I had Public Works out clearing roads because we were told that Tech dot had some equipment failures and we were kind of on our own, but we needed to do that so that our emergency response vehicles could still do what they needed to do. I I don't know if the officer at the back of the room gonzo, but there were police officers chasing down horses that got out. On top of anything and everything that you can expect when power goes down or when the Texas coast gets snow and ice, was just everything on top of it. And and it was a very unified effort, and everybody came together to make sure that it was done with care.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. All right, we are about ready to dismiss. We are gonna, we don't have anything in item nine, executive session. We don't have anything in consequently in ten. And so we'll go to requests and announcements, and we will start with Mr. Ross.
I would like to say good job on putting information out during Storm Enzo. I didn't know they actually named that one. But I, there was even a very grumpy old man called me up to give you kudos on how the information got put out, and I was really appreciative of that. I would like to talk to you more about your Night to Shine later. I want to thank everybody that's reached out since Wednesday. My family's doing okay. My other half has told me to be as polite to that person as possible, even though they're anonymous. And the VFW feels a little bruised, but we're not gonna say anything more about that, except for no matter whether you want to call it racism or hate, hate is hate, and I don't tolerate it. I might be better than than where you're trying to drag me to. But if you push me too far, I might be a man with special skills. So that's all I have to say about that.
Very good. I will close this meeting by by recapping a couple of things that are instrumental, especially in this city. We finally acquired software, financial software, that will go a long ways to keeping us transparent and accountable to our citizens. Lot of effort was put into that endeavor. We want to thank the administration, and certainly we want to thank Ms. Ms. Turner and her staff for bringing us to the point that we were ready to move forward with the choice that we made. Good luck to you, gentlemen, in your endeavors. Certainly, we we are excited about the partnership. If you haven't heard, crime is down. Not gonna beat that dead horse. But but again, good news in our community. I wanted to get to the idea of council behavior. Earlier tonight, there was there was a gentleman here speaking about another gentleman that attends our meeting regularly, who believes in his First Amendment right. And the question was posed, or maybe there was a contemplation by that gentleman as to why the mayor does not stop that gentleman from attacking other gentlemen. First and foremost, we have a city attorney sitting to my right whose job it is to keep the city of Lamarck out of liability. And before that gentleman ever begin the process of speaking to our community, Mr. Cunable advised me that it is in the best interest of our city to allow free speech, because it's his job to keep us out of any liability, any and all liability. And that gentleman has made it clear that he would take action against our city if he is deterred. And so I think it's better for us to endure three minutes of words than to spend one cent of taxpayer monies defending our city against this gentleman and and his speaking at our podium on a regular basis. Now, that's part of it. But the other part of it is this. When you erode civility, respect, when you thumb your nose up at norms and customs and practices, when that, that respect that is given between colleagues and constituencies and community is eroded in the name of free speech, we have to have known that there would be a response. There would be a backlash. And truth be told, we are in the midst of that response. We are in the midst of that backlash. We cannot expect as, as leaders of a community to speak freely in such a way that we would invite others to speak freely in like manner toward us. If we're going to say it, then we should expect that it be said in our presence. And that's the problem. That, that is not a rule that can be interpreted differently for different people, different constituencies, and different meetings. It's a standard. If we choose to speak recklessly, then folks are going to speak to us recklessly. They're going to speak about us recklessly. They're going to speak in our presence recklessly. And the only remedy for folks speaking to us, about us, and in our presence recklessly is for us as a council to stop speaking recklessly. It's the only solution. Because whatever we show by example will be followed by those that have elected us and those that support us. So we have to change our ways here on the council. And I've been hearing from many of our residents about this. Mr. Loftus is my friend, and I hear from him on this issue almost regularly. But I hear from so many more people. If it was just Mr. Loftus, it'd be one thing. But I hear this from almost every person I encounter. People want simply for their business to be done. They want to be represented. They want to understand what's going on in the meetings, and they want us to take action. That's it. They don't want the rest of the things that have come along with it. As a mayor, I have tried to lead from the perspective of the first day that I got on council. And when I got on council twenty-plus years ago, at thirty-one years of age, with, with men who had careers and families and grandchildren and, and all sorts of other accomplishments, I remembered how it felt to feel like I could not represent my district, District A leading the way. Back then, we weren't. I remember what it was like to have the, the gavel banged on me and to be silenced. And so I brought to this seat the desire for all of our council members to be individuals, to be able to speak their mind so that everyone would be heard. I tried to champion free speech, and I tried to make sure that, that every person who was duly elected represent their districts and their constituencies to the fullest. But today, I'm certainly sharing with you that I am more inclined now to preside in a more aggressive and a more assertive way because my constituency is demanding it. For example, many of you don't know, my friend, Ms. Nance knows because she, we have the discussion, and I'm sure Gus knows because he went to law school and he paid a lot of money to go. Or he's paying a lot of money to go. The last part of our agenda. Used to have a long, drawn-out thing. I call it a thing, but it's actually a law. Who would have thought? That narrows the focus of our end-of-meeting response to very specific things like acknowledgement of days and honoring of people and, and, and making aware of impending disasters that have not been announced previous. It doesn't say anything about free speech. Doesn't say anything about saying how you feel or what you thought about the meeting or what you think about your colleague or what you think about the world. None of that's even warranted. But because I am the presider, and I wanted to make sure that our council members had the ability to express themselves and speak freely, I allowed it. Even though Ms. Nance and at times Mr. Knabe advised against it, I allowed it. Well, I'm simply saying to you, moving forward, those things will not be allowed. The law says we can speak on five or six specific things, and I am going to make sure that Gus holds me accountable to make sure that that's what we are declaring at the end of our meetings. If we want to be recognized by the chair to make comments outside of that, we can do that. Any council member can say to the presider, "Mayor, point of personal privilege. I can grant that and you can be heard, but no more of this endless road of commentaries at the end of meetings because it has proven itself to be chaotic, confusing, disrupting, and disheartening." So next meeting, I will be more assertive. I didn't want to do it this meeting because I didn't want to catch anybody off guard or, or cause any confusion. So now that we've heard that, if you want to be heard outside of council business, outside of items that are on the agenda, you can simply ask the chair to be recognized, and then you can ask for a point of personal privilege. But just know that I am going to ask you, what is your point of personal privilege? And I have the right and the authority to not recognize that point of personal privilege. Again, in order for us to move forward without all of the disrespect and all of the confusion, we have to learn to lead by example. And so that's my first effort in learning how to lead by example. It's been a privilege and an honor tonight to be with you, ladies and gentlemen. A lot of great work has been done. If there is nothing further, we have a meeting, if you haven't heard yet, tomorrow at ten o'clock. And so I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.